All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have a lot of stuff to read at the beginning before we get into the heart of the agenda, so bear with me. As Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota. She's not muted. We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Back to you.
All right, I'll come back to her. Mary Branley.
Here.
Hillary Griffiths. Natasha Rivera.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, let's try you again. Okay. Um, see if you can, we're gonna need your input tonight, so, all right, she's here. For the record, Colleen, she's here.
I think she just logged, she's gonna call your name. Log back in.
Yeah. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Ferranti. Jeff, did Jeff disappear too? All right, he was here a couple of minutes ago, but maybe he'll come out. Now he's muted. Either that, or he, it, his clock is fast and he thinks it's nine o'clock. Brian Haas.
Here.
And Wayne White.
Here.
All right.
Elizabeth's back.
Elizabeth, can we hear you now? No, she's muted. Still can't hear you.
She can always call in.
Is her volume on?
Yeah, is the volume on your computer? Okay, we're gonna proceed, because I'm gonna read a bunch of stuff. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live, adequate, alternative means of public access to the deliberations of the public body instead of holding meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. The open law's requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of the open meeting law and regulations such as the requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in purpose, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convening by Zoom video conference as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the raise your hand function now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting, so I may make note of it. And I am looking. I do not see any hands raised, so I will assume no one is broadcasting or recording this. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021- dash 22 agendas under the tab agendas, under the tab school committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during this meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us and Colleen has put that email address in the chat. Just so you know, we will be having a live question and answer session at tonight's meeting, so if you would rather speak instead of emailing, you have the opportunity to do that. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments. Oh, I did that. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in its entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen. However, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first agenda item, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and when you do speak, please give your name and street address and speak clearly in a way that helps generate meeting minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote, and there are no votes going to be taken tonight, so I don't even need to say that. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the chair's report, because Monday-
Do we need a superintendent?
Open via roll call? I'm sorry, oh, right. I'm opening the meeting now via roll call. Mary Branley.
Here.
Elizabeth Albota.
Here.
Oh, we can hear you, good. Hillary Griffiths. Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes. On Monday, the superintendent held a meeting and all five school committee members were there, which is a potential violation of open meeting law, so I have to read this statement and recount everything that was said by the school committee members at that meeting. "On Monday, November 1st, the superintendent held a meeting with various town stakeholders to agree on the usage, management, and financial support of the district's athletic fields. The meeting was internal and operational. It was not a publicly posted open meeting. The superintendent invited two school committee members to participate in the discussion. However, all five members of the school committee attended the superintendent's meeting on Monday along with Jamie Carroll, Jim Hines, Drew Holmes, Ray Rashi, Ken Scully, Nicole Tyler, and Wayne White. Invited committee members may participate in a situation where a committee's quorum is present at a meeting that has not been publicly posted. The remaining members may stay as silent observers. Otherwise deliberations or the appearance of such might occur, which violates open meeting laws. Two of the additional three members spoke during the meeting. Under the circumstances, their participation created potential violations. To mitigate any violations and indemnify the school committee, the chair must publicly recount all questions and comments contributed by the committee by committee members in this meeting before any presentations, further discussions, or votes regarding this topic occur. Doing so informs the public of everything shared by committee members and any ensuing dialogues between them." Monday, November 1st, Superintendent's Athletic Field Stakeholders Meeting. Natasha Rivera began to speak at the start of the meeting, and Mary Branley reminded her of the open meeting law. Natasha stated that no SC member was allowed to speak because there was a quorum. Mary told her that wasn't true, but it wasn't necessary to get into it at the moment. During the Assabette Valley Little League Discussion, Mary Branley asked, "What fees do you charge to participate in AVLL? What is the number of annual AVLL participants? Do the same kids participate in each of the seasons? What is AVLL's total budget each year?" Lydia Clancy reiterated the questions to Ken Scully, AVLL president, who attended via phone and hadn't heard them. During the youth football discussion, Lydia Clancy asked whether the equipment is provided for the players or if they have to purchase their own equipment. Mary Branley asked, "Who plays on alumni field on Saturdays? Did youth football use alumni fields before, but then stop when they started getting charged? Do you only have one season? Are jerseys cost additional?" During the AVLL softball discussion, Mary Branley asked if Jay Rashi knew how much money advertising and sponsorship brought in. During the Maynard Youth Soccer Discussion, Mary Branley asked if the same kids participated in each season annually and if Maynard Youth Soccer provided porta-potties at Fowler, Rockland, and the high school front field every year. Lydia Clancy asked if the $105 fee to play soccer was annual or per season. Lydia Clancy asked all athletic club heads for confirmation that spectators were not charged admission to watch games. Mary Branley asked for verification that there was a beginning and an end to the Friends of Maynard Soccer fundraising group. She also asked if someone were to continue fundraising efforts, would that money go into maintaining the Fowler Fields? During the BGCAV discussion, which is the Boys and Girls Club of Assabette Valley, Mary Branley asked whether they used the fields for anything organized or just for the kids playing, and she asked about the usage of the basketball courts. In response to hearing that they don't have games at the Boys and Girls Club, she said, "Don't you use your gym for basketball," and then asked, "How many months is the basketball season?" Hillary Griffiths stated that the cost to play is $250 per season plus the price of a jersey and that the Boys and Girls Club doesn't turn anyone, any kids away who can't pay. After it was disclosed that non-school sports clubs are not allowed to use alumni field, Mary Branley asked the stakeholders from whom they take direction, because she didn't know who would have said that. When told that other towns can use alumni field, Mary asked if those towns helped pay to renovate it. She then asked how people go about reserving a field. Mary Branley stated that the district's goal is not to make money off the club's sports. The district's goal is to maintain the fields and get money to help take care of them. In response to the discussions about damage to the soccer goals and field at Fowler this fall due to use by other towns, Lydia Clancy stated, "If outside clubs are damaging the fields and the fees collected from them don't offset the cost of that damage, we shouldn't allow outsider, outside users. The cost to maintain and care for the fields and equipment would go down with less usage. We should keep the fields for town use only because outside towns probably wouldn't be willing to pay enough to offset the cost of the damage they caused." Mary Branley replied that she didn't think that was true. The cost comparison she did on other towns showed that they are willing to pay, and some towns charged double what we proposed. During the discussion of the DPW's oversight and maintenance of the town's athletic fields, Mary Branley stated that she recalled Justin Marco saying, DeMarco saying, "His budget has $40,000 allocated to fields, but he needs $70,000 to maintain them properly." Mary elaborated that it was difficult for the town or school district to know exactly how much it costs to maintain the fields because there are so many in-kind agreements. It's hard to maintain them consistently when there is turnover of the people making decisions and agreements, and there is no written record. It's hard to get that final number. Natasha Rivera asked Drew Holmes and Jim Hines for an explanation about resting the fields. In response to the assertion that Sudbury doesn't charge anything for their town clubs to use their fields, Mary Branley said that Sudbury does charge. In response to why soccer field maintenance is more expensive than baseball or softball field maintenance, Lydia Clancy recounted her experience playing soccer in her town. Her understanding was that the condition of the field and grass affects the game and therefore requires more maintenance and care than a baseball or softball field would. Lydia explained that the town she grew up in had an excess of tax revenue, so financing the fields was never an issue, and this situation is all very new to her. When told that the schools have got the tax money, but keep cutting the athletics budget and never put the money back, Lydia Clancy explained that the district might receive more money each year, but its expenses also increase. She used the example of teacher salaries increasing every year despite the number of teachers being the same or reduced. The money the schools receive from the town is all accounted for and there is no excess. Mary Branley asked if the Assabette Valley Club teams could use other towns' fields for free because there are kids from those towns in those programs. Mary Branley asked Jim Hines if he was going to hire someone to solicit businesses for sponsorships. Mary Branley asked if the group could address the equity issue, then agreed that it could wait for the next meeting. During the discussion about pursuing Community Preservation Committee grants for field improvements, Mary Branley stated that the district, the district contributed $30,000 to the Fowler Field renovation. Mary told Jay Rashi that the fact he had received approval from the CPC was huge. Natasha Rivera asked when the CPC grant application deadline is. The meeting was adjourned. All right, so that is the recount, that is the information that we shared and heard from the various members. I am now going to turn it over to Brian to do his presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to be here tonight with this nice crowd. If we were in person, it would actually be a crowd, but we're online, so it's hard to tell. There's just a lot of names on it. Before I, and I do have a very brief presentation that I want to walk everybody through, but before we get there, I sort of just want to clarify what I think are some misconceptions or things that I've learned in the past week as well. The goal for the schools has been to work to increase revenue with the sole goal of supporting the maintenance of fields. That's all. So there was, and so I want people to know that is the goal, it still is the goal. We may, we, we're taking a step back to say, okay, this, my original suggestion might not be the best way to get there. We still want to get there, and getting there is, how do we support maintenance of fields? We have hundreds and hundreds of kids playing on them. So it was interesting, as Lydia went through a lot of what happened on Monday night, and I'll talk about that for a minute. It was a great meeting. So one of the nicest things about the meeting is we had some of the key players, the leaders of several of the Maynard Youth Football, Maynard Youth Soccer, AVLL, Boys and Girls Club, and there's another, which I'm destroying. The Rec Commission and soccer football, okay, anyway. What I learned is that not only, and you know what, and I think of myself as a parent with four kids and having done the coaching thing from soccer when they were really little, and then they sort of aged up and they're like, "I'm not that great at soccer. I'm gonna try baseball, basketball," and having put the hours and hours in as a coach and enjoyed it. It was a great time between coaching and giving my paycheck to the snack shack for the kids who had dinner there every night for, you know, three days a week for months. What I, what I learned this week was that not only does this community and these programs, do they contribute volunteer-wise in terms of being coaches and dads and moms and helping in a variety of ways, they also contribute in physical accountable ways, not just coaching and sweat equity, but, to give you an example, some of the, and I won't go through each group on what they contribute, but some of what gets contributed, which offsets expenses, are porta-potties, which I know don't sound like a big deal, but they're unusually expensive, and we need them all over. So not only do they help a respective program, a town program, I mean, like a soccer program, but they also then can be used by the school programs and the families when they're there, whether it's soccer nets, whether it's porta-potties, whether it's, and we, I could go on and on. But it was very clear that they support the schools and the fields in a variety of ways. So if that got lost, or if it came across as if that was not appreciated, I will say, I don't know that I knew it as well now as I knew it two weeks ago. That wasn't the intent. Again, I'm going back to, and I'll remind you a few times tonight, is really to figure out, how do we bring in some revenue, and maybe it is not through the programs? And we had a really good discussion in terms of how different teams do it. AVLL has a structure in place that brings in some revenue to them. Could we mimic that in terms of advertising? That could be a direction for us to not then have to increase fees. So it's really, you know, as an adult, I can say, "I had a suggestion. I can take it off the table." It doesn't change the goal. It doesn't change that, you know, I had a long conversation today with Justin DeMarco from the DPW about his budget and maintenance of fields, and it's never enough. So this is the right conversation to be having. Even if we got here kind of on a rocky road, I'm glad to see there are 70 people online tuning in. You know, it tells me this is important, and we want to get to a place where there's some agreement about how do we move forward, because my sense is, from the conversations Monday, from my conversations with Justin today and prior conversations, that this is not a new conversation. The rates that are on the school's website are not new rates. They've been there long before I came in looking at the dates on them. It doesn't mean everybody's paid them, but we, I didn't create them. So this conversation is ongoing. It started a long time ago. What I'm excited about is I feel like the people at the table right now, the people at the meeting are in a great position to help us move forward and talk to the town as well and get to a place where we'll have a plan to be able to maintain the field. So, and I, and my presentation is very short. It will probably take five minutes, and then I'm happy to turn it back over to the chair and open it to comments. I'm gonna ask for help from Colleen, and she's gonna share that presentation, I hope. She's nodding yes, so that means she's going to. There she goes. And so I'm literally not going to reread this to you. It just tells you who is, who was part of the original conversation and what the goal was, which is really what I just said to you, to be able to adequately maintain the fields for both the schools and the towns, and really for all the kids. Continue, Colleen, please. And this is, this just connects to our strategic plan in terms of how do use the field and the programming that we're talking about connect to overall education. So it supports inclusive practices, supporting all students, social, emotional learning, that's fine. Yeah, yeah, keep going, that's good. Again, our task is to really decipher a lot of information. I think when the chair read some of the questions specifically, I think Mary Branley mentioned that there's been a lot of agreements that have been in place from a lot of different organizations through different school leadership, and nothing's been memorialized. So that was part of the challenge, and we're reading our way through that, again, to get to that same goal of solid fields. Next. So recapping the meeting, which I don't think I really need to do, because the chair did a nice job of identifying who was there and what was said. Those are good, I will say it was a very good learning experience for me, and if it hadn't been so rocky, I don't know that we could have got everybody around the table at one time, and everybody said, "Hey, we're willing to come back to the, to the library and have another meeting and continue the discussion with next step." So I'm excited about that. A couple of the outcomes from that meeting is, one is, and I think Jay had, he sent me the advertising model that AVLL uses. So we're gonna research that. We got it this week. We're looking at that and seeing, might that help us figure out, how could we do that? On a scale with alumni field, the school committee has already approved last year that advertising is okay, so that doesn't need to be done. That was a policy they approved last year. We need the, the protocols behind it, the administrative piece. That's in, in process. Colleen? Thank you. Again, I don't feel like I need to read what I already said to you just about different things that different groups do to contribute. And it was, like I said, I learned a lot hearing that firsthand, just about how much gets done. So I was appreciative. Next. So again, some evolving options. As we're learning more and more, are, do we indemnify the four main groups that were there and just leave those relationships alone? We put on the table at some point during that meeting, what about a flat fee? Could each team pay X, and we didn't even come up with an X yet, but would a flat fee be reasonable? But it, and as it says on here, kind of withdrew that idea because they're already doing it. So if it didn't really fit, we put on there, continuing with existing relationships, generate, generate revenue through advertising, and again, looking at annual field maintenance plan for the schools. And next. And then making outside groups, besides these groups that are really born and bred in Maynard, they would then pay the existing prices that are posted, not new and crazy, just the, the prices that have been posted and have been there, but really hold people accountable for that and keep the two-price structure for profit and nonprofit with a 15% decrease. But this wouldn't apply to the groups that we've been talking about the last couple of minutes. So this needs to be revised, because there's, it's not perfect the way it is. It needs to go through and has, needs some more discussion. On one page, for example, it talks about alumni field being, I believe, $700 for a day. And then on this page in particular, it says it's $117 per hour, so I think we can clean that up. There's a little bit of a disconnect there, quite frankly. How many hours is that based on? But, so this needs to be revisited. Next. And again, I'm just reminding everybody, our goal is to come up with a plan, which is an inclusive plan with the town, with the DPW, so that we're not always scrambling to find monies in whether it's the DPW budget or the school budget or the overall town budget to maintain the fields. We want good fields. We want our kids to play on good fields, whether it's a sport program or a town program, because it's obvious. I mean, most of you are probably parents, but the kids who are in T-ball and then play Little League, those are the kids that become our varsity athletes at the high school. This is the feeder program all the way through. So we're all in this together, very clear, and that might be, but let's see. And if we're successful, this is what we will have, well-maintained fields that will continually be able to well-maintain for decades to come, and that's the goal. So we don't have to have this conversation in two years. We will be able to put a plan in place. So hopefully that clarifies a little bit. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you, or-
All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna go around now and ask if Ed, the members have any comments before we go to the open forum and open it up to the public. Mary Branley?
So I just, first of all, just am so grateful that we were able to meet with all the stakeholders on Monday. It was a really, really productive meeting, and Drew had followed up with a little note the next day, and I said, "One of the, one of the great things to me was to have all the stakeholders in a room to find out from each other what their arrangement is, because they even have different arrangements from each other." So it was, it was a really great meeting, and everybody seemed very enthusiastic to continue the meetings and that, so. And as Brian said, there's been years of different agreements with different people and just to be able to, just like what we're trying to do with the school, on the school committee side, to put protocols in place, so regardless of who the players are, no pun intended, that every, you know, we've got the same policies and that, so that we don't have to rework this again, because it has been going on for many, many years. Sorry that you were thrown into it, Brian. To me, youth sports is so important. It's such an important piece of the fabric of our youth. It has so many different, it, just so many characteristics that help, help youth become who they are. So it's incredibly important that that be a piece of what we're working toward and really grateful for all the community feedback. This is, you know, it, it kind of was an avalanche, but it's been all really, really good feedback and that, and it's pretty obvious that everybody's passionate about it, and I'm really grateful for everybody's passion, and especially all of the volunteers that do so much, you know, regardless of what sport and what part they play, but their effort, their time, and the passion that everybody contributes to our youth activities. So that's it.
Thank you. Let's see, Hillary Griffiths.
Um, is this like my general comments on the whole?
Um, is this like my general comments on the whole field thing or is this my question?
This is, this, yeah, this is just, we're going to have a discussion after we hear from the public. So this is just a comment on his, his presentation.
Okay, um, I have lots of comments and thoughts and stuff. But my questions for Brian, I'm just wondering, I know, it wasn't its own topic, but it was sort of said at times of discussions that a lot of our maintenance costs, we're paying the DPW overtime to do. And I'm wondering if that's actually like 100, 100% of the maintenance costs they're doing on overtime. And so I'm wondering along those lines, if we weren't paying overtime and we were paying a local business, would that, you know, take the cost from time and a half to straight time and right there cut off a big chunk of the costs? And then also could you shared the data that Jay sent you just because I'm a dork and like numbers and data?
The advertising?
Later, not now. Sorry, what?
The ad, the advertising.
Yeah, the ad stuff.
Yeah, I can absolutely share that. And I can meet with Justin again, just to get a little clarity on that, so I don't want to misspeak here. But I will, I will follow up on that. Thank you.
Is that it, Hillary?
Um, I think the rest is all just my thoughts on the thing in general.
Okay. All right, Natasha?
So a couple of things that I just hearing from the meeting the other night and the presentation that we have was that there are really strong themes of the desire and the need to maintain a really great partnership. There was feelings of inequity in how the fees are being requested in which organizations. I noticed that there was, you know, a strong desire for control of some of the fields once organizations make an investment into them. And so how, you know, we can consider some of those things. A desire to prioritize the Maynard organizations. I think that that was something that I really would like to see more in, in any future model, like a recommendation for a prioritization like scale of, you know, and this is very common in other towns as well, where it's very clear, there's no confusion with, you know, who gets first dibs at particular location. And then I think the other part too, which I didn't see reflected here and it didn't get talked a lot about before, but the custodial piece and how that might be potentially reimagined in some way, maybe in this might be more, we can talk about when we deliberate amongst ourselves. But I didn't see it reflected in the presentation and I just wanted to highlight that that would be something I'd really want to think about how we consider that for our, our partners who are actually Maynard residents versus how we would address. Because they have a genuine desire to maintain the facilities more so because there are reoccurring, you know, groups versus a different approach for external organizations who just kind of come and go and really don't have that sense of community ties to where we are. And then the other part two that I wanted to get a little bit more, so that the takeaway is about the advertising, pursuing advertising, which I think is certainly spot on. But the other part two is the expenses. And I just have a lot of questions and I think Brian, this is what I would want to get, have you speak with Greg and Justin more about is that, so when we look at the MOA and what our understanding of, and this was, you know, it's been one year, right? And so we started someplace with the MOA and we see that there is language in there that the athletic fields are maintained by the town. I am wondering what, how is that looking over these past couple of years? Like, is there a way we can get some data from the past five years of what that expense has been? And is that budget amount or expense wise, is it, is it going up and down? I'd like to just kind of get a picture of that. One of the things that was said the other night was about the Fowler field investment. And I found it interesting because the, and this is, could be a change of guard issue, right? So I know that the Maynard, Friends of Maynard pursued, you know, CPC funding and that there was a field, Fowler was a field before it was renovated, right? So there was maintenance needs there. There was some dollar amount should have been allocated there. Obviously it needs more, but now that we're hearing more that there's money running out to maintain the field, what happened to the money that was prior, that was being used before to maintain? Even if it was not a sufficient amount, there was still some funds. I'm, I'm just curious where, how that shift happened in the commitment to maintain Fowler, you know, during this, how this has kind of evolved? And then also looking at, again, reading the MOA, I wonder if we need to be more explicit about the, the things that need to be maintained, right? Because I know that Justin has certification in, in landscaping and part of his expertise. And I think we rely on that because we're not in the maintenance area. But, you know, I think there's a lot of like fertilization and stuff. And I, I want to assume that that's part of that. But maybe if we can get clarity on what are those tasks that he actually is doing to maintain them, that would help.
Okay.
You good?
I am.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Yeah, thanks. The two questions I have about what I just heard, and I'll save the rest for later, are, first of all, I did hear at that meeting the other night, a lot of talk about, about an interest in having two different pay scales, like Natasha was just saying, for in-town and out-of-town organizations, in addition to maybe nonprofit and profit. So I saw on your slide, it still said nonprofit and profit, but then it sounded like you said that that would not apply to people in town. So I'm not sure if you did say that or meant that or meant something different.
So right now, one of the, and I'm not making the recommendation yet, but one of the thoughts based on that meeting would be to continue with the existing relationships for the four or five groups that we met with. Because they're kind of the big key stakeholders in town with the most amount of kids participating, so.
You're saying just until July?
No.
Of 22? You're saying keep it the way it is? This picture should only be for outside of town.
Not only outside, but if there's new groups or it depends. But these groups right now, they're clearly, they've been in existence for a long time. They each have literally hundreds of kids participating in a variety of seasons. And they already do contribute in some way to the fields that they respectively use, so to not charge them. Like we, we thought, oh, maybe a per hour fee would make sense, but it really doesn't. And then, you know, at the meeting we put out, and I think you heard, what about a flat fee? So when you, when I take a step back, I'm like, really? What's potentially what happens is, and you can pick your group. Any one of them would say, okay, we could, you know, you, I'm making a number up now, but they pay $2,000 and they give that to the schools to put toward field maintenance. All, it's sort of, as I look at that, that would be $2,000 less that they would invest in the field they're currently using. So it makes sense to leave it as it is because they're already doing it somewhere in that way. So we've taken a step back to reevaluate that. So the price point that scale with profit and nonprofit, really for other groups.
Okay. And the other thing I was wondering, you talked about for the next meeting and it said on the slide that part of the next meeting would be about looking realistically at the cost of maintenance and getting a quote on that. I know at the meeting, there was talk of should the DPW do that or somebody outside of anyone involved in it directly? So what did you decide? Who is doing the quote?
So right now, the DPW maintains our fields.
No, yeah, no, I know, but who's, oh, so you're just, so who's doing the quote for like how? My understanding is that you're going to get like, this is how much it costs to maintain a field the size. And this is how much it costs to maintain a field the size and then look at it realistically.
Yeah, and I think the DPW has that, they already do that. And now I think one of the parts of the next conversation is what's the level of comfort that the community wants their fields? Do they, are they satisfied with the condition the fields are in? Or do they want them, or are they too nice and they could be a little less? Or do they want them to be a little bit better? So then that starts to drive what, how much will it cost to maintain them to that level? So there's sort of a user level piece that I don't know yet, that I would like to know. And then I think the DPW responds to that level within the, what they're able to do budgetarily. So as you mentioned, the advertising, that would be a way to add to that pot of money to maintain fields either at the current level or even a better, a higher level.
Okay. Thanks for that for now, thanks.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, Hillary?
So when you, in your presentation where you talked about the, maintaining the relationship with like AVLL football, soccer and the club. I think it's important that we recognize though, that the relationship with soccer and football and AVLL, like we're not currently charging them for the field use. We are charging the Boys and Girls Club, you know, I think they said it was 80% of their budget goes to the schools. So I don't know that we necessarily want to group them in with saying the current system is working for them. Where I think the current system, you know, at least to some extent is working for the other organizations. I don't know that we want to group the club in necessarily the same way or at least just recognize that we're already charging them currently.
You're correct, we are. And one of the differences, they are, they predominantly use inside facilities as opposed to fields. So, and we can absolutely revisit that and reevaluate that. But the inside piece certainly comes with an additional expense of custodians to make sure the building's secure, make sure the building's clean. So it's a slightly different expense, but we can certainly look at it. We'll look at everything.
I just wanted to like clarify because there are also comments about how like continuing not to charge those groups. We are charging one of those groups.
You're absolutely right.
Natasha?
And so in piggybacking off of Elizabeth and regarding the quote for, for maintenance, just hearing some of the numbers and reading some of the numbers myself of what that would really entail, which is, I don't know, could be up to $100,000 in total. Wouldn't that require some type of RFP or something to that extent? That wouldn't be something we would do anyway, right? That would have to be, I mean, it's a service, an annual contract of service, so over a very large amount of money. So we wouldn't even be able to do that kind of solicitation of getting quotes, right? Isn't there a procurement, procurement processes? And I don't know if this is more of a Wayne kind of question, but it's, isn't it over a certain threshold? Do you have to go through the procurement process for getting requests for proposals or?
We're not going down that path.
Okay.
Over a certain number, there's a, you have to get a certain number of quotes and it goes through a different process, but we're not pursuing that.
Okay, okay. And to that same point, I do think there is, does need to be a comprehensive understanding of that. So I don't want to lose sight of, maybe it's not us who does that because it is not. But I do think that there is the need to understand what that number is. Because ultimately, I think what we're talking about in the larger scale is that we, the status quo actually isn't working, right? So we need to do better than the status quo, right? And so we recognize that there are some fields that people aren't paying for. And for whatever, not judging, just that's the, that's the current situation. However, there are fields like Green Meadow, that backfield, which is also under the DPW purview to maintain, is not being, I think Justin has indicated he has zero money. He puts towards that Green Meadow field in the back. And that, I think, needs a lot of attention and could have potential for something in the future. So I think that we, it's going above our status quo, I think, is what I would want to say. So I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what we've seen, but I don't necessarily think zero is also helping us here. And this is where I think the conversation would evolve, you know, and like to see that. We also like the bleachers, like all those things that we, we just have, you know, expenses, major product equipment. You know, hearing some of what youth soccer, we're talking about the goals that the expenses, 10,000, was it 5 to 10,000 a goal, 700 bucks for a wheel on one of those? I mean, I think it sounds like the, the school benefits from, from their equipment, right? It's on a field, Fowler field that the school also uses. So I think there just needs to be a really good understanding, comprehensive, like, you know, all those pieces, because it's the status quo of them doing that, but we're benefiting. I just want to make sure the equity piece is felt. And I think some of that was heard at the meeting Monday, that there, some, some areas do feel, you know, for instance, you know, AVLL, no one, except for the softball for Keenan, no one really touches that property as much. I mean, there are certain people who wander, but like on a regular, frequent basis. But you know, Fowler does get a lot of use very regularly and that, you know, is maintained by another organization. So I don't know, just some, some thoughts there. But I think the, I would say that the status quo is not really where we want to continue. But I don't know when we would start changing that and how, that's where I'd want to, you know, have those discussions continue. Well, and the other part two is the indoor. So I know we talked last time about music and I didn't see an update about that, but I didn't know if, if.
That's a different conversation.
Okay, so is that going to, that's, we'll hear more about that at another time?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then, and so with the, this is strictly for outside. And we're not, even though we had the inside fees, we will have a time at a future meeting to talk about recommendations for inside. Okay.
Yeah. Lydia, if I could just, just follow up on, on what Hillary said too about Nikki, about the Boys and Girls Club. She did, Nikki did say that they would, they'd love to be able to benefit from more fields, but it's just too expensive. So if we could just add that to the equation, they would love to be able to do that. They do take advantage of the Coolidge. I don't know what else in the summer, but, but yeah, so just.
And that was the other thing too, the scheduling was a big thing, I think, because I know that they said they go whatever's available. And just hearing some of the other groups talking, I think like reserving space, you know, having it. I mean, I know there's software out there that's, you know, doable. And I think, I remember there was talk about us getting a new, like it's not School Dude, but it's going to be another software, is that right? That, is that what's? Yeah, okay. So is that something that people could go in to type of reserve a field and we could collect whatever, something through there?
It, it needs to get worked out according to, I mean, like that's part of the conversation. Colleen, do you want to speak?
We are getting transitioning away from School Dude to a much user, more user-friendly software. It's just getting people to actually use it. Not everyone uses School Dude for the fields. It has that capability.
Okay, so whatever future software, we, we are envisioning that it would be external organizations would be able to like a self-service to go in and, and, you know, book it or whatever. Okay, and it would be accessible. Like I know the rec commission has something on there, the rec committee, like a, like an Excel sheet maybe on their website. But, you know, it's not like you can reserve it that way. It's just, but it's viewable, but it's only certain groups that are listed on there. So it's a central place, I think is definitely felt needed.
School Dude is available, available to everyone right now and it has been. People just don't realize they need to go through that to reserve field space. Most of, most of the big players know, youth soccer, football, they all know.
Colleen, do you remember what the name of the company is that you're researching?
It's ML Schedules. We've already started implementation, it just takes time.
Thank you.
ML Schedules? Yep, okay.
Are you able to make it so, you know, there, there can be a hierarchy? So it's not total self-service, like some random groups can't come in and book times that, you know, we want other people to have available?
That I haven't gotten to yet.
Yeah, can we take this discussion offline or to another time? Because that's not really the focus at this point. And there are lots of questions and it's still sort of in the infancy stages of, of implementation. So I would like to move on to the, the open session for community questions. And if we have answers, we will provide them. So if you would like to speak, there should be a raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Colleen, can you, what is it if you're on a phone and you want to raise your hand?
It was pound nine.
Star nine.
Star nine.
Star nine.
So star nine, if you would like to speak. Okay, so we have Patty Chambers. Can you unmute her, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
So Patty Chambers, Mayberry Road. I just have a question about the nonprofits. Um, I'm a participant with Really for Life. And um, as you know, we use alumni field um, annually. And it's, I believe it's probably a twenty-four hour period from setup till when we break down. So looking at your chart, I saw it was ninety-nine dollars and change. So roughly twenty-four hundred dollars plus other fees is what will be expected to be charged. Is that correct?
I I think we're still revisiting that chart.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you have a follow up or?
Well, I I'm just, you know, I as a taxpayer and I don't have children in the schools, but um, it is an organization that raises money for um, cancer research, which affects all of our residents in, you know, in town. I'm sure every one of you have been affected by it. So um, I hope you think um, seriously about um, what kind of fee would be imposed on that. Thank you.
We are Patty, just for your information, we are also exploring flat fees. To, I mean, we're, we are actually, we are very open to suggestions. So anyone who's out there who has a suggestion, you feel free to email it to us because I'm sure that we do not know everything there is to know about financing fields. You know, Jay Rash, he really encouraged us to look into sponsorship and and getting ads. So um, that's one avenue that we are going to explore. Um, we're really, we're not set on charging fees or hourly fees. We want to work together with everyone and figure this out. So if anyone has any suggestions, feel free to email them or raise your hand and um, share them with us. All right, Dan Nash.
Hi, um, I have more of a statement than questions, if that's okay?
That is fine.
Okay. So on October twenty-first, the superintendent provided all of you with proposal on field usage fees. One of the very first comments that was made by the chair of the school committee about the proposal was, this looks great. Was it great that proposal did not mention how much field maintenance would cost the school district? Was it great that this proposal did not inform the school committee of how much revenue this proposed fee structure would bring in? Over the past few weeks, a week and a half, I spent many, many, many hours discussing and analyzing field usage fees. In my opinion, there have been a lot of mistakes made that have led us to where we are right now. Mistakes made by the superintendent, business manager and the AD. But my limited time, I will focus on mistakes I believe the school committee members have made. Even starting tonight, some information provided earlier was not accurate and not correct. In our schools, amongst many things we teach our children, one of them is to be a critical thinker. Unfortunately, on October twenty-first, there was not much critical thinking happening by our school committee members. Perhaps it was because the proposal came two hours into a meeting. Maybe this school committee members were just spent, maybe they're ready to get the meeting over with. But for some reason, many very important questions were not asked. Questions that go to the core of why there should even be a field usage fee and what that fee should be. Here are some of the questions that should have been asked. What would field maintenance cost our school district on an annual basis? How much time and how often do the organizations that rely on these fields use them? What percent of the time is the field being used by a school team versus a local organization? If you don't know the answer to these questions, how do you know what to charge for using the fields? Why didn't anyone on the school committee ask any of these questions? The school committee has an MOA with the DPW. Did anyone with knowledge of field maintenance take a look at the MOA on behalf of the school? All you've heard is that the DPW is supposed to maintain the field. Look closely at your MOA and ask yourself these questions. Who is responsible for the aeration of the field? I can tell you, it's not the school. I mean, it is the school, not the DPW, according to your MOA. Who is responsible for fertilization of the fields? Look at it. It's the school. It's not the DPW. You talk about a forty thousand dollar budget for the DPW on school on maintenance. That forty thousand dollar budget applies to all field, parks, cemeteries, on field and school field. How much of that forty thousand dollar budget is actually being spent on school maintenance on school fields? Does anyone here know? What do you do moving forward? Does the school administration have someone on their staff that can dedicate the time and energy to do all this research? Can someone document a complete scope of work for field maintenance for every field and map out who is responsible for what? Does the school administration have someone on staff that has the knowledge and understanding of field maintenance? Will someone take the time and effort to get data from the organizations that use these fields and rely on them? Will they fund to be set up so that all field usage fees can only be used for field maintenance? Sadly, my time is about to expire. These questions are just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more to unwrap, like why are we punishing two organizations that have or about for hundreds of thousands of dollars for field improvement? Friends of Maynard Soccer received three hundred thousand dollars to upgrade your field. Friends of Maynard Softball are at the final stages of securing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to upgrade Keenan Field, which hasn't been touched in over thirty years. And I ask you to just look at your own pillars. Foundation, research-based best practices and data-informed decision-making. And I want you to ask, was that applied when that proposal was submitted to you on October twenty-first? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Um, first of all, I don't know that we can answer all of those questions at this at this time. It's um, I would need to see them in front of me. Can you email those to us?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. That's what I thought. It sounded familiar. Okay, yes. Um, so we will work on getting answers for those. I will say, and um, this was explained before and I will reiterate. We did not know we were going to be presented with that um, discussion on October twenty-first. We knew it was part of the superintendent's report and he was basically just introducing it to us. Um, and so none of us was prepared to ask questions. And so that's probably why there weren't more questions asked.
Um, can I, in in the October twenty-first school committee meeting, it was uh, stated that you all had gotten that one week prior to October twenty-first. So everyone had it one week prior. And when asked, superintendent said, yes, he was expecting a vote on this proposal tonight. Fortunately, for all the people that are here, there was a bit of a procedural issue and it did not end up on the agenda and it was not permitted to be voted on. Um, however, the intent was it for it to be voted on that night and my understanding, according to your own school committee meeting and the superintendent, you all had that for a week prior to that meeting.
So Dan, I I think there's a little clarification that needs to happen. I asked Brian at that meeting. First of all, we may have had it for a week, but we didn't read it with the intention of voting on it. So when we have to vote on something, we look at things in a different way than if we're just reading it for information. Um, and at the time, because it wasn't on the agenda as a vote and because we got really deep into the discussion, I asked Brian what his intention was and if he wanted us to vote on it. He said that, yes, we could, but none of us had been expected to vote on it. The superintendent had not asked us to vote on it. He just said that we could if we were ready to and we weren't. And part of that was because it hadn't been an agenda item and we couldn't. But we also had questions and wanted to revisit it. So um, I think it's important to we need to 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 have an accurate narrative about what actually happened. And it wasn't that we we were intending to vote on it because we weren't.
I would, I would encourage you to go back in and look at the two minute, the two minute mark of the two hour mark of your meeting. Um, replay it and then I think you can understand why many of the people that have shown up here today felt that it was the intent of that to be voted on. Uh, one school committee member commented, I thought we were voting on it, but we can't because it's not on the agenda. Um, you, you yourself indicated that, well, we on it. And then it was highlighted that it was not a business matter, so we couldn't. So um, I think there are some people in some school committee members that may disagree that there may have been an intent to vote on that. However, I will, I will gladly agree to disagree on the intent. I'm glad it didn't get voted on. And I'm glad where we're at now and hopefully we're heading toward the positive direction on this topic.
Um, I think another thing to consider is even if we had voted, it doesn't necessarily mean it would have passed. So I mean, that that wasn't a foregone conclusion. But thank you very much for your comments and we will um, work on answering the questions that you had for us. And thank you for being here tonight. Um, does anyone else have anything they would like to say? I don't see any other hands. Do any of the school committee members, um, do they have anything that they would like to say to either Patty or Dan? Respond in some way. Natasha?
So I just want to thank um, thank him both for speaking. I know Dan has been spending a lot of hours and trying to understand this. Um, and I appreciate, um, although I think the way we got here was not ideal. Um, and I do personally apologize if any of my words or actions were perceived in anything, but appreciating the work that our stakeholders um, do for our community. Um, I am happy that this is now being talked about. And so Dana, thank you for sharing and being passionate about it. Patty, thank you for bringing the concern up about the building. This is all very helpful to understand and hear about. And um, as a school committee member, I am, you know, we need to listen. So um, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, I'm gonna, oh, Hil- oh, Hillary.
Oh, um, I wasn't actually trying to raise my hand, but I of course have things to say, but um, I think if I were to say something, I would say, um, I was actually trying to look and see how many people we have logged on right now because I can see that there's three pages of people. Um, and I know that um, field maintenance is something I know nothing about. I know nothing about my home lawn maintenance. Um, I know that I want our kids to have fields that they're proud of. I know that I want us to, you know, eliminate as many extra costs for kids as possible. But I don't have any great ideas about how to go about doing that. And um, we heard great, some good suggestions on Monday night, but um, I don't know how many people are represented by three pages on Zoom, but I would love it if some of the people that are logged on now could share any of their thoughts and ideas for how we can go about accomplishing this goal because not to speak for my other school committee members, but I don't think any of us, this is our area. Um, and so, you know, anybody that's been putting thought into this the last week or for longer than the last week, um, I'd love to hear what any of your thoughts are.
Mary.
Yeah, no, I I'm great, very grateful to Dan. And I know we did get that email, very thoughtful email from him. So and also for Patty to and anyone else that um, you know, because the Relay for Life has been, it's another thing. It's been going on for a lot of years. They've raised money. It's it's all Maynard people that are participating. There's so much effort that goes into it um, from from volunteers again. So um, I'm really grateful to hear from, you know, we've got the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts. We've got so many different groups in town. Um, so to, you know, you are being heard.
Okay, Dan. Dan Nash. Okay, Dan, I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't, um, did you say your street address, the or what street live um, when you first spoke?
Eighteen Michael Road.
Okay, thank you.
And if you look, if you look at my lawn, I don't know a lot about field maintenance. In the past week, I've learned exactly.
I'm allowing you to dance in your lawn, I'm sorry.
In the past week, I've learned plenty and I will have a very lush green lawn come next spring. Um, I just throw my hat in the ring, um, I'd be more than happy to assist in any way possible. Um, in trying to procure quotes on field maintenance, to be quite honest, as a group of parents that have already started doing that legwork, they've already started reaching out to, you know, people they know and saying, okay, can you get us some quote? Uh, we can kind of wrap our brain about what is this really going to cost? Um, I've had lots of conversations with school committee members, with Boys and Girls Club, with superintendent Haas, and I appreciate him giving me the time Monday morning to to air some of my concerns and ask questions. And he provided clarification and uh, he was very receptive to the um, what I had to say, but um, you know, if if there's some sort of task force that the, I know you guys are waiting on the town because or the town is doing a task force about all field usage and and all that. Um, you know, but you you know, you need to move a little bit quicker is my understanding based on comments and and that I've heard. Um, I would be more than happy to jump on board and assist in any way possible. And I'm sure um, I can find plenty of other parents and volunteers um, to assist in that process.
That would be fantastic, Dan, and we would really appreciate it. Um, and that goes for anyone out there who is who is willing to help collaborate and um, Dan, I, Brian, do you want to speak to that? Do you want people to reach out to you directly? How do you want?
Sure. If people are interested, Dan, that's great. I'm sure I will absolutely take you up on that. And if you know other people, they can, you can send me their names or they can reach out directly. Um, we'll take help in this. We're, we don't have, you know, this is a capacity issue at some at some level and not, you know, I'll speak for, you know, central office. Like many people have said on screen, we're not, you know, we don't own landscaping companies on the side. This is not our area of expertise. So we'll be glad to take the help that um, you're able to give. And I think we'll come to a good conclusion. So thank you for volunteering, Dan. You might regret that, but I hope not. Um, and if others want to join in, feel free, reach out.
If it saves, if it saves my family four hundred and thirty-five dollars for ten weeks of softball rec, I will do it.
Fair enough.
Lydia, just one more thing I could, and if there's anybody in the audience that has expertise in how to get advertising sponsorships, that's because that's come out loud and clear. Everybody has probably seen it in other towns. Uh, again, it's manpower. So um, any help related to that would be greatly appreciated also.
Yep.
I wonder if, um, I wonder people, what what is the timeline now? I wonder if if we give them some kind of timeline, people be more willing to ask questions or say things now? You know, what are you thinking for the next meeting? Um, when is the town having their task task force and who exactly is going to be on that? Maybe if we give more detail, then maybe people can chime in here with what they're thinking and what they're questioning.
Well, Brian, I think at Monday's meeting, you said that you wanted to meet in two weeks with the same stakeholders that were at Monday's meeting, correct? And that seemed to be you had positive responses to that. So I think that's probably going to happen. Um, we don't know what the town's timeline is. They're they're operating on a on a different schedule. We're doing what we need to do so that we have the information that we need to have to bring it to that task force when we finally sit at the table with the town and the DPW and the other people involved there.
Um, when are, what is their goal? And how, at what point are they trying to get something in place? Do they have an end goal?
Uh, if if they do, it hasn't been shared with us.
Okay.
Policy is one of the things, right? I know Justin had talked about this maybe six months ago was consistent policies throughout all town fields and school fields as one of the points. Um, but at the time, there wasn't a mention of fees, but I think that was, it was kind of talked about a little bit, right? Um, I think the select board has mentioned about inconsistently because Crow doesn't charge, but you know, some areas do and some some equity there. Is also an issue or concern.
They have no deadline and there's no sense of the priority level for them on this?
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't think that that Greg has shared with Brian, no.
Okay.
Okay. Ryan, did you want to?
No, what you said is accurate. I know this is on their agenda. I know this is important to to the town. Greg and I have talked about it, but I don't have knowledge of a specific timeline or who's involved. I can certainly reach out to Greg and tomorrow and see if he actually is further along or knows more. I just haven't been part of those conversations on the town side yet.
Good. All right. Uh, Kevin Stone. Kevin, are you there? I can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, um, I'm going to go on to the next person, Nicole.
Needs to be unmuted.
Who needs, yeah, who needs to be unmuted? Who needs, yeah, who needs to be unmuted?
Hi, I was just wondering, this is a question um, probably for Brian. I was wondering where does our athletic director fit in all of this? And what are his roles and responsibilities on field maintenance? Acquiring sponsors or or where does he fit in all of this?
Great question. Um, and it actually sticks into our overall budgeting conversations heading into next year. Cause right now, our athletic director is a stipended position, just so everybody's aware. It's a, I would say it's a relatively big stipend for stipends, but it's a relatively small stipend for the job. So our athletic director, and this is not, I don't, I wanna say it's not that common anymore. Receives a ten thousand dollar stipend. That's it. Um, and it's a really big job. I think you probably know that, as many of the people on screen know, just how much is involved in setting everything up and scheduling and rescheduling and and keeping an eye on the fields. And he's actually the one sort of at not necessarily game time or but game time, practice time. He's the one who says, hey, there's too much water on the field. We can't play. Um, cause he's there and he's, he has that. I would imagine he's part of all of these conversations. Um, and in terms of just think, future thinking, I mean, that mean, we may want that to be a bigger position. I mean, that's part of the budget conversations, cause then that role could contribute to working on acquiring advertisers. And you doing more than they currently do. And I'm not trying to answer all your questions, so if you could be unmuted, cause I'm not sure I did. If there was an other components of that question that I missed.
Uh, we also need a name and address.
Yep, it's Nicole Carlin, twenty-two Driscoll. Um, no, I think that you answered my question. Because it's a stipended position, but who, I guess, where was the decision making in reducing it to a stipend position? Rather than a full-time position?
Okay, so my, and I, that's gonna go back, yeah, that probably goes back a long time before my time. I don't know that it's ever been a full-time position. It, and so if somebody on screen knows.
No, it was the Kevin, that's what, Kevin was a half, half leadership. Yeah, and he did that for a while, and then he became separate. Then it was stipended for one position, and then it was an internal, because it was a stipend, it was always kind of internal staff. Who kind of took it on above their work. Oh, Colleen, look, she's.
It's in the teacher's contract, it's in the MEA contract, and it's always been a stipend position for presumably a teacher.
And if I can just add, I think a lot of smaller school districts, districts our size, they started this way years and years ago. Cause it's a really affordable way to have somebody sort of quasi-manage athletics. And many, many districts have gone the route of changing it from a stipend stipended position to a full-time position. Because as time has gone on and with specifically concussions and things like that. Um, the jobs just become more encompassing, so they've become full-time. So just food for thought.
Okay, uh, Kevin, let's try you again.
Hi, I think my mic's working now.
There we go, yep.
All right, great, um, so.
Your address, please.
Uh, seventeen Rice Road.
Thank you.
So I I would just, a suggestion is if we could get some sort of accounting from DPW of what their maintenance schedule is on the field and what work they're performing. Um, not only so we know like what the investment is in the athletic fields. Cause as as pointed out previously, it's it's not that full forty thousand, it's some subset of that. Um, but we can also figure out how to not step on each other's toes. Um, and overlap and work. If DPW is doing something, that's one less thing we have to worry about. But we really need to know what the work schedule on the fields is gonna be. And to get accounting just for a feel of like what we have to chip in.
Thank you, Kevin. All right, and then I have CAA Work iPhone. I'm not sure what that is. But we will unmute you, and if you could give your name and address, please.
Um, sure, thank you, Madam Chairman. This is Chris Arsinal, thirty-four Parker Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Um, uh, if I could just go back to the question of what can we do better? And I would say it's what you're doing now and to continue on what you're doing. And that's to bring in the different stakeholders, to to gather their thoughts and information. And to to put together that diversity of opinion and to try to build consensus. So I think you're doing great on that. The the one thing I would add is to have a vision for the future, for what what we what we're going towards. Perhaps it's a vision for one in five, perhaps it's a vision for what we want in five years. Um, but I would just add a vision of where we're headed was would be my only thing to contribute tonight. Otherwise, I really appreciate all the efforts from the board and all the other community members involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chris. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'm gonna wait one more minute. And again, if you're on a phone, it's star nine?
Star nine.
Star nine.
Lydia, can I, can I just, while we're waiting, just comment um, cat on Kevin, something Kevin mentioned?
Yep.
Um, so one of the things I know that came in the discussion on on Monday was about the relationship with DPW. And I think there is obviously, I mean, that's a critical relationship um, that we need to maintain and foster, just like all of our partnerships. Everyone's kind of a partner in this. We're all, we all have a role. Um, I think one of the things that came out is um, looking at capacity, right? If we're paying, if we need to pay overtime rate, you know, for something that is not within their capacity. Is there the opportunity to look at con, you know, third party uh for some type of service instead of paying that? And I think that's what we need to probably get a little bit more of understanding on, right? Is that, is the alternative for some of these low-hanging fruit items for maintenance that we do pay? Um, cause when we read the MOA, I don't think we require it, but sometimes we want them to do it because they know our resources best. But maybe we think of it differently, if like some of these other man landscaping things that, you know, don't necessarily require their expertise. Is it really, I want to hear what we're paying the overtime rate for specifically, what instances? And is there an opportunity there to uh, on a smaller scale, nothing that would require like an RFP or that much? But that we could potentially um, get a quote for that, for the things that we do incur.
And the other thing I'd like us to consider too is finding out like what certain tasks that require minimal, you know, expertise, what those would cost. And then offer to the various clubs, okay, this is how much this would cost us to do it. If you provide it, you know, that would be part of the accounting of what we're receiving for maintenance on that field. Does that make sense? Because right now, I don't think, I mean, I I don't believe there was really, I mean, I know Michelle Rosenda has asked for receipts on materials and things, but I don't know that she received receipts on how much time or labor was spent on maintaining the fields. For instance, this past winter when the, or past spring when the football parents all came out and and did snow blowers across the field for hours. Like, you know, what, what would that have cost us to to do? And there should be some sort of acknowledgement of that time and investment into that. And how do we compensate them for that? Um, Dan Nash.
Um, I, this is a question, um, we keep talking about the the DPW and overtime and all that. Can the school committee tell us how much money they've actually transferred to the DPW for field maintenance related items?
Uh, is Wayne, did Wayne go away?
I don't have that information, like at my fingertips. That's something we can definitely look into and get to the school committee. Wayne may want to answer that. I didn't mean to step on the business manager's toes.
No, you answered that correctly, Brian. We'd have to to look that up. I know that uh, fairly recently, there was something we paid for lining or whatever. Um, they usually do something like that or uh, or get a, tell us how much it's going to be. And then ask us if uh, we're okay with them proceeding with the work. But the exact number that we paid so far this year, I'd have to look that up.
Um, I guess it's a, one other quick comment. Um, uh, when you, when you gave out the AD stipend, I said, no way I would ever want that role. Um, and I think about all volunteer work that many of us in this conversation do now. I'm like, I guess we're kind of doing it for nothing. So um, I do think it would have been a nice show of support to the community if if he had been present, and I don't see him here. And I know it's a stipend position, but this is obviously a very important topic for a lot of people and a lot of stakeholders. Uh, I just wanted to say, I I think it would have gone a long way for for some of us if uh, if he was present and and participating in this. Like seventy-five other people are. Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. All right.
And if I can just comment on on that, um, I just know how many meetings and how many nights he's out. Um, so I would say that's on me. He would have come if I had asked. It's just one of those things that I think his time probably better spent at a meeting with some stakeholders and some key folks. Um, I hear you loud and clear about just the optics of that. He is interested, he is dedicated, he is putting in a lot of time and energy. And I was trying to be respectful of his time, but I hear that it would have looked great. Um, I think he does know the community's invested and the community, you know, has a high expectation for their fields. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay, um, if there are no other comments. I'm gonna go around the school committee members one more time, and then we are gonna move into um, citizens' comments that were submitted via email. Mary Branley.
Nope, I think I said it all the first time. Just grateful for, I'm really grateful for all this input and continuous input from everybody. Any suggestions that people have?
Okay, Elizabeth.
Yeah, I mean, I, we have a deliberation coming up after this. I think we should save it, I'll save it for that. But in the meantime, sure, thank you for everybody who commented, and if if people are thinking about writing emails, I hope they will.
Natasha.
Um, just to acknowledge again, I I know Maynard is really built on the backbones of volunteers. And so, I mean, we, it's essential. And so, just the takeaway is that that is not something that I envision. Take, you know, breaking that type of relationship or partnership in any capacity. Um, I don't, we wouldn't want to do that. So just to kind of put that out there, to thank everyone again for for all the time that they've done that. And just on the heels of the discussion of uh, Lydia, you mentioned about accounting for um, I guess, labor that's not really paid, that would be really critical to those, you know, understanding of of inventory of expenses. Is um, you know, for each of the fields, you know, how much, you know, what is Fowler, what are they doing over at Fowler Field? That um, to maintain that that is not DPW subsidized. Um, and in all of the fields in that capacity, so. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Hillary.
Um, my one question to add on to what you were saying last, um, Lydia, is I know that at the last meeting, um, Wayne had really briefly mentioned something about tax issues with exchanging um, like volunteer time for things.
Yeah.
So if that conversation goes further, I'd probably like more info from Wayne about that side. And then I have a lot of comments from when we do our deliberations, but in case people leave um, the meeting before then. I just want to say how grateful I am for the folks who work with our kids outside of school. Um, the coaches and troop leaders and volunteers and the Boys and Girls Club staff are amazing. And I'm grateful for what they do for my child and all the other kids in Maynard. Um, my child's involved in many of these activities. She's done soccer, softball, basketball, the club, Girl Scouts. Um, and I still was really surprised to hear some of the things that people mentioned on Monday night that they do with regards to financial support for our teams. Um, like paying for um, awards at the banquet every year. And you know, different supplies and safety equipment and things. Um, and then for the community listening, I understand from a personal's perspective where some of the concern came from, listening to our meeting. Um, my twelve-year-old heard me talking about the prospective softball fees on the phone and heard me say that the fees could go from two hundred to four hundred dollars for the season. And she said, don't worry, I love softball, but I'll quit. Um, and so I do get that, you know, these, this, this increase isn't, is not an insignificant increase. Um, I also get that we need to come up with a plan so that we don't just rely on good-hearted donations. Um, but I a hundred percent understand the fact that these fee increases would have on families. Um, and I, you know, committed to working together to find a solution.
Thank you, Hillary. Okay, um, I'm now gonna move into citizens' comments. And I have to pull those up. All right, Colleen, have any new ones come in or are we?
No, no, no one knew.
Okay. So first we have from Andrea Can, uh, no, first we have from Jenny, and I really hope I say this right. Juan Yaga. However, she did, oh, yes, okay, she's at Allen Drive. Um, hi, sorry if your email is blowing up over this, but I feel strongly and I feel, feel I need to voice my opinion. My name is Jenny Lu- Luanyaga, and I am at Allen Drive. I have two kids, age nine and seven, both attend Maynard School and participate in Maynard Youth Soccer. And soon, Maynard Rec Basketball. I just recently learned the school committee will be voting to charge Maynard Sports Teams slash Groups. May apply to other activities like the Scouts as well, not associated with the schools. A fee to use the school grounds. Many of these are nonprofit organizations that will need to raise fees for those wanting to join and participate. I feel this could put up some barriers to the number of kids that will have access to these programs and feel this is detrimental to our town. Kids out of school activities, whatever they may be, are super important to their learning, growth and development. Keeps them involved, keeps them active physically and in their community, and can provide a sense of purpose. I think increasing pricing would limit those that are able to participate, and I do not see the benefit of this. I would feel terrible for the kids who can no longer participate, the kids whose friends can no longer participate and those that may not have a full team left to play. It truly hurts everyone. It is my understanding that many Maynard Teams slash Groups help out in the community and do assist with the upkeep and maintenance at these fields slash locations. Aren't these publicly owned properties? Aren't we as townspeople already paying more than our fair share of taxes to keep up our little town? This just does not, does not seem fair. I'm not sure how the members of the committee may vote, but I'm asking all to consider the impact to the kids, our families and our town if these fees were to be raised. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Um, Andrea Cannon, Walnut Street. To whom it may concern, it has come to light via a social media post. The school committee is proposing to make our sports organizations pay to use Maynard Fields. We as Maynard residents already pay more than enough to have our children participate in sports. And having us pay even more so, you can get an hourly rate on using fields that we already pay for via taxes is ludicrous. You want to fee other towns to use, you want to fee other towns to use our fields, have at it. Maynard Youth Organizations should be exempt from any fees proposed to use our own fields. We clean them, we prep them, we do a lot of volunteer time to have our kids be able to play and keep the fees as a reasonable amount. My child is not the next Brady or Pele, but to have them play is an important part of development. You impose this fee onto us and we won't be able to afford to have our kids play. Is that really what you want to have happen? I truly hope not. We, as many other families in the area, are still in recovery mode after losing a lot of income because of COVID slash shutdowns, et cetera. We are trying to keep as many things going as we can for the kids. To have the signup fee increase to cover your field fee is not acceptable. And we will have to tell our children they can't play next season because the school committee made it too expensive for them to play again. Is that really what you want to have happen? We voted you all on the committee to serve our community and be transparent and keep us informed of happenings. You're trying to put this in without much feedback, and it probably would have happened without someone watching you close enough to inform the rest of us. Why do you do that? Why can't you serve us without trying to put something like this through? You know, it's not something we'd like because it's something that shouldn't be considered. I'm gonna read the rest of this, even though it goes over three hundred and fifty words. You are. You aren't working with us when you do this. You are sliding into practices of years past and it's not a good look. Don't do this. Let our kids play on our fields in their own town. You need more money. Fee other towns to use our fields. Sudbury uses them and Concord Fenn is using our tennis courts. Fee them. They have the money. Why do they come here to use our stuff? Because we let them. Why don't they use their own fields? Because it costs too much? Hmm, there's something to think about. Don't do this. Let the kids organize and play where they live. Kind regards, Andrea Cannon. Maro Hogan Thompson Street. Dear School Committee Members, I'm glad to hear that you are revisiting the field fees, but I think it needs a little more time and discussion. Which includes the DPW and representatives from youth sports before making a final decision. We don't want to make the fees so high that these organizations can't afford to rent the fields or prevent children from playing these sports by passing. The cost down to the families, but we do need to make sure that our fees are covering the costs that are associated with maintaining all of our fields. Example Fowler Field Estimated Maintenance is eighteen thousand dollars. I suggest that the team looking into the field fees also consider using the Fowler Field, Field Fences to put company advertising. Which will bring in revenue. This was brought to the school committee a couple of years ago, but never went ahead. It got stuck in policy. I would hope that in the meantime, the fees that are in place are being enforced. Thank you for your due diligence, Maro Hogan. I would just like to respond, I responded tomorrow, we actually did approve using the fees. On, I mean, the Fowler Fence for advertising. And so that is an option. We did approve that. All right, next I have Nicole Carlin Driscoll Ave. Dear School Committee Athletic Director Aria Superintendent Haas and Business Manager Wayne White. I am writing you in regards to your decision to drastically increase slash charge usage fees to Maynard not-for-profit youth sports organizations. It feels non-transparent and unethical that you would try to put this to a vote without any input from parents. Stakeholders, youth sports organizations, or the DPW. I am confused as to how this was about to be voted on at the last S C meeting without even one meeting with the field task force. That was discussed at the September twenty-third School Committee Meeting. I'm curious how Mary Branley, A D Aria Superintendent Haas and Wayne came up with this fee structure without speaking to the superintendent. Of the DPW to get input on what. Cost is on these fields. I'm curious if Mary Branley, A D Aria Superintendent Haas and Wayne factored in. The impact to Maynard Youth Sports without speaking to any board member of Maynard Youth Football, Maynard Youth Soccer, AVLL, the Boys and Girls Club, et cetera. Can you tell me the actual cost to maintain each field? Is annually? Can you tell me what the maintenance procedures are on a baseball field, a softball field and a soccer field? Can you tell me the actual field usage for each field annually per organization? Is your plan to pay the DPW to maintain the fields or would the school be maintaining the fields? Does the school currently own equipment necessary to maintain these fields? Can you break down the annual hourly usage per organization that uses these fields? Do you know how many hours each team is on the field within the organization? For each organization that utilizes school fields, do you know what they currently charge each participant? Do you know what they would have to charge after the fee increase? I'm sure you have all this information readily available since you would have used this data to make an informed decision on your fee structure. I'm sure you reviewed the impact these increases would have on the participation fees. That each organization would now have to charge to cover the field usage fees. Unfortunately, this goes on a lot longer. It will be included in its entirety in the, the meeting records. But is substantially longer than three hundred and fifty words. Dear School Committee Members, I hope this message finds you all well. First, thank you for your time and commitment to our schools by serving on the school committee. I'm a resident at eighty Concord Street, Maynard, Mass. And parent of four children, three of whom attend MPS and participate in youth sports. I'm writing to express my concern for and disagreement with any policy or procedure that would raise or impose additional costs on town groups. Such as athletic teams for the use of school fields. It was brought to my attention via my husband who serves on the AVLL Board and through social media that there is an intention to raise fees to rent fields. In my opinion, this is a poor decision for our students and community. This is not the time to be raising costs for our community members. The cost, the organization will be passed on to registered families, many of which are already paying taxes to fund school buildings and facilities. An additional financial burden is unnecessary given that groups already put time, money and resources into the field use. Two examples that come to mind is fundraising done by Maynard Youth Soccer to fix Fowler Fields and AVLL paying for porta potties. At this time, Maynard maintains high but affordable fees for sports activities. Increasing these costs will cause further financial burden to low-income families. And could deter their interest in and participation in youth sports. Youth sports have been shown to have a positive, to have positive impacts on physical and mental health as well as build community. I urge you to look closely at this decision and understand the ramification beyond the fiscal use. To the school and to the larger picture. Maynard Public Schools should avoid making decisions that negatively impact community members. In a small town with one elementary, middle and high school. These fields are the first exposure many children will have. And, and they very well will play on them through their entire youth sport career. We must work to ensure that all children have access to these opportunities. Thank you for your time and attention to this important part of our school community. Denise Cormier thirty Walnut Street regarding the proposed new fee structure to be imposed to use Maynard Field, Fields. The fees proposed are not feasible and I have no idea where you came up with the numbers. I've researched other town sites and cannot find anything close to what you propose. Maynard Groups and Sports should be able to use Maynard Fields without fees. The fee to participate in sports. Should pay for referees, umpires, et cetera. Coaches are volunteers and much of the maintenance has been volunteered to have our kids play. If you vote in the fees proposed, you are putting nails in the coffin of Maynard Sports. My self-employed husband is the only income of our family. We are still feeling the effects of COVID's economic blows and slow recovering. And slowly recovering. We have to pull our kids out of sports. We will have to pull our kids out of sports. Is that really what you want to have happen here? Superintendent Haas, during your last meeting, your nonchalant request to put it to vote now without presenting it. To the community was a reckless attempt to put something over on us. You saying there would be a minimal increase of our participation fee shows us you didn't do any research. A quick calculation puts an increase of over four hundred dollars to participate, to participate for one season. So my fee to have one child play for two months increases to over five hundred dollars. We have been put through way too much in the past to let this happen without a fight. So here we are again. Feeling like we're going to battle with a committee to fight for our kids. Why can't we impose fees for other towns to have to pay but keep Maynard's organizations where they are? Or impose a very minimal fee, user fee? Other towns are coming to our fields because theirs are too expensive to use. What does that tell you? What do our taxes pay? Why isn't this a DPW issue? Shouldn't the school and the committee be addressing school issues? Fields are not school issues. Curriculums, academics, health protocols, et cetera, not groundskeeping. I am one of many voices. Do what is right for us and our children. Let them play. And then our last one is from Holly Murray, nine and a half Maple Street. I'm a Girl Scout parent and leader in Maynard. I want you to hear how the proposed fees will impact the Girl Scouts of our town. Some troops meet after school in the school buildings. Meeting after school allows girls who may not have a ride to an alternative meeting space the opportunity to be in a troop. The Girl Scout Organization discourages meeting in private homes and will only officially allow it on a temporary basis. It costs forty per year to be a Girl Scout and this fee goes directly to the council. The troop is then run by dues or by money made during cookie slash candy sales. My fourth grader meets after school at Fowler for one and a quarter hour meeting at every other week. Using the proposed fee schedule, her troop, her troop will be charged a hundred and ninety-one dollars for eighteen meetings. To cover this cost. The troop will either charge each girl an additional thirty-two dollars. Or the troop will need to sell two hundred and twelve boxes of cookies, which would take twelve hours at a typical booth sale. Cookie money is usually used for activities or buying supplies for meetings, not rental space. Girl Scouts is essentially an after-school club providing social emotional benefits run by volunteers. In lieu of payment, the Girl Scouts have been conducting an annual campus cleanup. I've been at this event and we collect a substantial amount of trash for the schools. Additionally, for our spring twenty twenty-one bridging ceremony, we spend two hours mowing, mowing, weeding and removing trash at Fowler for the event. I've done some research and Girl Scouts are not always charged for meeting in schools such as in Lowell and Littleton. The question is, should we be having students sell Girl Scout cookies to support our school budget? Please do not charge fees for school Girl Scouts to meet in classrooms during regular business hours. You will be eliminating a safe ADA compliant meeting space and possibly a low-cost activity for girls. All right, and Colleen, I assume there are no more. Okay, all right, and that is it for citizens comments. We are now going to. Move to school committee discussion about this and. Again, I just want to remind everyone, we're not voting tonight. We are merely discussing the information that we learned on Monday and tonight. And share. Our opinions and what we would like to see happen. So I will go around. Does anyone want to go first? All right, I'm calling on you then. Hillary. She's muted.
Um, so I think that it's important that we recognize the strengths and the limitations of our town. Financially, we're more limited than surrounding towns, but our huge strength is the passion and power of our community. And I think we need to make sure and use those strengths. And this, the fields are a perfect example of that. I would so much rather the cost of maintaining our fields be carried by the willing volunteers and local businesses than by the children for whom the costs. Can quickly become inaccessible. I spent a lot of time thinking this over and keep going back to what our overarching goal is. As a school committee and a school, and I think it's to develop healthy, happy children who can think for themselves while working with others. And I think that we, that goal is successful when the kids turn eighteen and leave the school system, not just at the end of the day when the clock strikes three. And the kids go home. There's still our students when they get to the Boys and Girls Club or to football practice or when they come back in the evening to work on hands-on STEM projects with their scout leaders. The difference with all of those activities is that the only real cost to the school is the use of our facilities. So when I think about how much money we pay for kids to do science experiments in school. And then the cost for us to have kids do science experiments with Girl Scouts, and obviously they're not, you know, apples to apples. But I feel like the return on our investment as a school for these activities is really huge. You know, things like social skills, we can teach them in classes and. In small groups in school, but the, those small group activities like girls, my daughter learned so much about social skills. Being in a six-person Girl Scout troop with two leaders who could really. Give constant feedback that the teachers can't give all day. Cause there's one of them and so many kids. I don't really have any solutions that haven't been talked about already, but I would really like us to avoid charging in-town nonprofits that work with our students. Including the sports teams involved in Monday's meeting. And I know this is the last thing people want to hear because it's sort of going in the opposite direction of where. The original proposal was going, but I'd really like to even stop charging the club. At least the types of fees that we've been charging them. I haven't liked the rates that we've been charging them over the past few years. It really bothered me that during the asbestos issue, they offered their space to our kindergarten. For free. And then when they needed space, when they had an asbestos problem. They were charged an incredible amount of money to rent the hallway of the high school. And I, I don't think that's like a fair reciprocal relationship, given the commitment to our kids that they consistently show. I was really surprised to hear on Monday, and it's really bothering me that. The vast majority of their budget goes to our school for facility rentals. I've seen them handing over bags of groceries to kids who need it when I go to pick up my kid. They provide school supplies every year, homework help every year, mentoring, they provide us. A safe place for kids to be who don't have access to other safe places. There's so much vital work that they're doing for the most needy kids and I don't want us to be taking eighty percent of their budget away. For our facilities. I would love for us to pursue sponsorships, potential field rentals within the limitations of the. Needs for the field to rest, which I'm a little iffy on how much we can do that and the, the whole idea of the field resting. And then, you know, increasing budget from other factors. I was hoping that if, when we talked about, you know, a potential seventy-five thousand dollar. Fee for maintenance. If that's time and a half that, you know, finding an alternative to paying time and a half could cut us down to fifty right off the bat. I think that we should pursue some type of a collaboration with the town. I don't really like the idea of different fields being handled with different budgets and different maintenances. Like I'd like a. The M O, M O A, M O U is, is a great start, but. I'm a little uncomfortable with how much we're putting into Alumni Field for Boys Football. That isn't necessarily carrying over to Girl Sports and some things like that. So. I really appreciate the efforts that were done on the meeting on Monday. I think that we should have, definitely have more meetings like that and probably include some other folks like Girl Scouts. And then try to make a more comprehensive plan as well. When we get down to the policy side, I think that reading some other towns' policies, I've liked. The outline of who has priority and hierarchy and booking the fields. And then some of the, I definitely don't want to, if we spend a lot of money to fix fields, I don't want us to use them when we're going to be hurting them. So I've seen some of the policies outline conditions to quantify how much water on the field is still playable and. Those factors that, you know, the sports folks understand that I don't really get, but in some way to sort of lay that out in a policy with the rest of the stuff. Sorry, I just talked for a long time, but.
No, that was good. That was great. Thank you, Hillary. Okay, um, I'm gonna call on someone unless someone wants to volunteer. Natasha.
So. I. Thinking about a lot of, a lot of time to think, a lot of time to research. I want to just re-echo the prioritization. I think that is really necessary beyond. The nonprofit for-profit status. I think there definitely needs to be more delineated. I would like to see. A more delineated approach to, to that in meaning. One, you know, you talk about the, the different, so it'd be like Maynard Town Sports and then you have Recreation. Then you have youth organizations, then you have adult youth, then you have nonprofits and then you have non-resident stuff. So that's the kind of tiered thing I would like to see as a prioritization. But then also, I would like to see. If we are to explore some type of fee. That it would be greatly reduced for the Maynard Recreation, Maynard Youth Organizations. Boys and Girls Club of AVLL and. And, you know, potentially other Maynard. I guess prioritized groups. Because they do have that vested interest in, in the community. You know, going back to the custodian piece as well, I would like to, and I, you know, Lydia, you, I know you sent you and Brian an email, but. You know, think about more of a deposit approach. Where a team or an organization were to put a deposit, because I think the reality is, we, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we saw what happened with. Football games, right? I mean, the reality is that sometimes we don't really care for our resources as best as we will, right? That's including our own residents sometimes. With, you know, looking the trash and all that needed to be cleaned up at Alumni Field after the football game. And it was really AVLL the next morning who went in and cleaned a lot of that up. And so, so I would, they clearly, just like all the other organizations, have a really vested interest in the, the resources of that. So. If they are going to be thinking about some type of maintenance or consider cleanup thing, I think it really should be something that is, hey, you know what? Put a deposit upfront, whatever that dollar amount is, you maintain this area, whatever the contract, whatever the agreement is, the space. Put a deposit upfront, whatever that dollar amount is, you maintain this area, whatever the contract, whatever the agreement is, the space, and at the end of the season or whatever we define that event, it would be refundable to you as long as no, um, you know, there's no, no mess up, no need to actually do a cleanup. Um, I, I think when I was thinking about it, how does that work when you have multiple organizations in the same area and you're charging a custodian fee, you know, so if you have something like a baseball game here and another one on the other field, I mean, reality is we don't have the staffing resources, custodians that we're paying, you know, all those overtime for each, each of that, right? And I think it would be so arbitrary, um, because the need to clean up is probably not going to be what we would be imposing. I, I don't feel like that's grounded in a true need, and I think the idea is not to price people out, but it's to also make sure that we have our, our, our resources are protected, right, and are maintained. So because these organizations do um recur multiple seasons and they're here and they do clean up anyway, um, I think that would be something I would like to see considered um, instead of a custodian hourly rate in some capacity and maybe reserve that more for building consideration. Um, where that has a lot more reasoning to lock up, you know, clean up space or whatever classrooms, whatever that might be, um, more needed for. Um, the other thing is, um, the conversations about the monies, whatever the monies are, whether it's through advertising or however, there's definitely a desire to have more transparency on the expenses and income as it relates to field, and so I think that um, we need to, I think, as we're, as we're having these conversations, which I envision will continue um, on a, on some type of frequency in a regular basis, part of that will be information sharing along those lines, you know, so these are what we're, you know, I don't know if it's quarterly or whatever, that could be part of our quarterly budget, you know, maybe that's, we need to think about that, that we include how much we're spending on, you know, and if we're getting the incomes, I know that we have, and this might be a weighing question. Um, so we have a revolving account for facilities, right? And we haven't drawn income into it because we haven't, or not much because of COVID, because we haven't rented much. Is that the account that we would envision for, okay, so it would be another account separately? That we would, okay. No, 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 thank you, because that's the other part too. I think it would be, so it wouldn't be that account, it would be a separate revolving account we envision would be where the revenue for field stuff would go?
Correct, we have a revolving account for field maintenance.
Okay, and so is that, um, um, and this might be more of a conversation in the budget subcommittee.
Agreed.
But um, I think understanding that mechanism of expending to it and income, I think that would be helpful for um, thinking about how we could, you know, include that in information sharing as we, you know, go forward to build that confidence and and, you know, when we do have advertising, this is how, what is the balance? This is the expense to it, and that's how you get those healthy, you know, conversations going in that direction. Um, I think also part of it is understanding the, how that works with the DPW and, and their expenses towards those similar efforts and, and, and hearing if we can get that. Um, and then, did it, did it say that a task force, so you are, you all are meeting in a couple of weeks again? And then is it the expectation that this would be just kind of a reoccurring in some frequency and um, do we have a need? This needs to be implemented. I just want to understand our urgency here. Is the urgency that DPW has indicated? They are, have no funds for Fowler. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the impetus of, of getting this done. I know it's helpful because we need to start somewhere, but I want to make sure that we're responding to, what is the urgent need um, in this moment to, to think about it, or is it something that can be decided in the, like, conversations and we decide maybe in a six months, we come to, you know, just because it'll help organizations to build some in their budget, you know, versus, um, you know, right now, and I did see that part of your presentation, Brian, so thank you very much, but I think, you know, even thinking about FY twenty-three, because a lot of organizations are still recovering from COVID. Um, and so what is the, what are we thinking is the primary reason? Is it just to kind of build up? Because we're really at a zero, a low place?
Uh, well, I can address a couple of those questions. One is, we definitely have an, another meeting for the stakeholder group, and I heard, I think Hillary mentioned adding a couple more people to that group. Um, and that's possible as well. Um, and I'm sure we'll meet a few more times. I would not anticipate that group meeting continuously forever just because it's a lot of time and it's a Monday night, and I don't know that it's, like, there's a cause here, so then there's a reason to meet. Um, I'd say when there's a, a need, absolutely we would meet. And then the other question was the sense of urgency. I think the sense of urgency is twofold. One is, I think this has been an ongoing conversation. So now that we have this momentum, this is an opportunity to move it forward. Um, so that's one piece of the urgency. The other has to do with Fowler Field and that there was a significant sum of money raised in the past, which has been used to help maintain that field, and that sum has been depleted significantly, and I don't believe it will last too much longer. Um, and on a continual basis, my understanding from Justin DiMarco from the DPW is that there, he's never really allocated um, an adequate amount of money for field maintenance, so he does the best he can with what he's allocated. So this, again, is a sense of urgency to be able to continuously maintain fields and hopefully a slightly or even a significantly greater level than they are. It really depends on what the community wants. So that's the urgency piece.
Okay, and just to kind of, as we're talking about the DPDO, uh, DPDO, DPW, um, when we think about the MOA, because I know this, again, is only one year, and, and it was a start. Um, but I think that the school department had a feeling of some reassurances, so when, so when we agreed the town will be responsible for maintenance of all athletic fields, including the field adjacent to Green Meadow Playground as shown in Appendix C. That right there, I, I think maybe we need to dig deeper into um, if there is the understanding that the town isn't able to do that, that needs to be highlighted more privately, you know, in a more, at a clearer conversation of what is not able to be done as part of that agreement, because I think we want to prove it if we need to, right? We need to have the conversation. But if there, it's certainly, we're not micromanaging what, I don't know what Justin does all the time and what his schedule is and what the DPW does. I don't know if you do. Um, I think there's expectation is that they're just doing what they need to do, right, per the agreement? And so if the, if we're, we're having trouble doing our mutual parts with the agreement, I think we need to have a conversation on what the challenges are. Um, with that and the reasoning, if it's funding, but maybe understand what part of that funding, you know, a little get, dig deeper into that, because I think, um, just not doing it isn't the right answer either. So, um, that, that, that to me is a little bit, um, I was a little unsure about as well.
And I would just comment, if I may, that I hope I didn't give the impression that the DPW wasn't doing due diligence and meeting the letter of the MOA or maintaining the fields, because that's not the case. Um, I think they do a great job. Um, in addition to school fields, they're responsible for all the other fields, the cemetery, a variety of other things that, trust me, I do not know, so I don't want to speak for Justin. Um, and it sounds like a lot of these questions would be best served by conversations directly with the DPW.
And do you think that this will be something that, that task force, the town, this is part of that, might be talked about a little bit more in-depth?
Is, um, we had invited, um, we had invited Justin to the meeting on Monday, but he wasn't able to make it, so, um.
Yeah, I think, I think Greg said he was at a conference for these past couple of days, right, last night? Um.
I don't want to speak for Greg. I would assume that all the people that you're referencing would be included in any task force. But I, I haven't been part of conversations about that, but it would make sense that they are, so I assume, I would think that they are.
I mean, bottom line is, they're our partners, and we have an expectation and they have an, right? Our, their expectation of us is outlined in there that we're going to be doing some sidewalks and all this stuff around it. So if we get questions about that, that's on us, right? But then it's hard for us to answer questions on things that we understood that they're going to be doing, right? And so that's where I want to make sure that I'm more informed and that the community is more informed on um, what those pieces are. And if we need to pivot or, you know, revisit, or, you know, when this MOA, you know, comes up in a couple of years, you know, re-codify certain um, other things like Dan was mentioning, um, aeration, utilization. I mean, it's not explicitly written in there, but it is maintenance. Um, and so, and we are, and he's a landscaping person, so I, I want him, he did inform the conversation in a very healthy way when we're going through the negotiations, so I just want to make sure um, we're, we're moving forward in that, in that regard. Um, and then, um, my last feedback, or just to kind of think about is, um, and we'll just to kind of reinforce is, I, I think we're, we're, we're not talking about just maintaining. We're kind of, we need to build, right, and do better, um, because we do have areas that are not really being addressed to the, their full need. Um, and speaking of the DPW, that their budget is even reducing because the gift is, is gone. And so that's money that has to be made up somewhere just from that piece alone, and that's just to kind of level, level service. Um, so in, in hearing some of the conversations where, where people at the stakeholder were talking the other night, um, it did stand out to me a little bit that the org, the makeup of the organizations are different, and not all of them are fully Maynard, right? And I think they've evolved in some sense. Um, it seemed like Maynard Youth Soccer is fully Maynard, but Maynard Youth Football has evolved with Nishoba in some capacity, and I know ABLL um, is mostly Maynard, has, but has elements of Stowe. And so just that, all that to be considered as we're talking about, you know, where, what our directional approach will be, um, you know, MOAs, I think MOAs are a great option to think about, or I know we talked about with ABLL, but if we need to expand that for other organizations, um, you know, what that would be, that we might also, my other thought. Or MOUs, sorry.
All right, thank you. Um, Elizabeth.
Okay, um, so at that meeting, um, I, I learned a lot of things, and I just want to start, I guess, by saying that um, I'm really sad to hear that the community was so worried that we would be doing something that would hurt children. Um, I think we made a really firm commitment to making sure that we're going to take care of all kids this year. In fact, I think that's why a lot of us are on this board. In fact, all of us are on this board because we are dedicated to that and we have, you know, established a new DEI, some committee. Um, I mean, we, we actually do, are working pretty hard to make sure that we take care of all kids, and the other thing we've committed to is having no surprises, and I think here we fell down and now we're learning from it, and I'm glad we are. Um, so, so a couple of things I heard at that meeting that I noted were that there are some um, that, that there, they are doing things very differently, and I, and I think that that's something that I didn't know before. Um, I think, I also think that there's that potentially before we go into the meeting, that there should be some research of how other towns are doing it. We can't be the only town that has in-kind. You know, we talk a lot about how we have a lot of in-kind work, but I'm sure we're not alone in that. Um, I'd also, like, I, like I was talking about the cost of maintaining the, each field, but I guess what I really mean is what is, what actually goes into maintaining a field, you know, Dan brought up some of that. Um, and so we're talking about how much the DPW charges versus how much an outside group would charge, but really, I guess the question is what needs to be done? And then are we looking realistically at who's doing it? And, and how could it be done in a most, in the most cost-effective way? You know, I was surprised at the meeting to hear about porta-potties and that sort of thing, that it had never occurred to me would be part of a field, or especially like you mentioned, the goals and that they are ten thousand dollars each and that we're not buying them, but the, you know, the youth soccer is. Um, so, so really, I, I think that part of the next step is really laying down what exactly we are looking at for costs and then thinking through what that, how we can do that best. Um, I think as far as no surprises goes, I think one thing we have learned from this is that we need to establish tonight or soon ways that we can check back in with the community or with stakeholders, and that might be another meeting like this that's public, but it might also be just a public place where we're writing down where, where we are in the process. You know, so far what people have heard, I think, is that there is going to be a meeting in two weeks, and they've also heard that the town has another meeting that is going to happen at some point. But, you know, I think that because there is, it sounds like, a pretty firm history of distrust between the school committee and this, and the people of the town, that we need to be very clear that we're not going to do that, that we're not going to do anything that looks suspicious again. You know, that has to be very much transparent, which is something that I know we all care about and we want to see happen. Um, I also think that we, that I noticed that there were a lot of, there was a lot, there were a lot of different kinds of worries from all the different groups, you know, their DJ's field is a much different uh, field, it turns out, um, from the soccer fields, and there's much different concerns going on. Um, and so in, in all of this, I hope that we are giving the people who are coming to these meetings with their concerns a way to lay out all that they're worried about, because they, they are worried about things. So I think we need to lay out the anxieties that they have, and then really think about how we're going to accommodate those anxieties in a way that is going to work for them and for us. Um, again, with, like everyone else said, it's, it's important that kids have access to sports and we have to make sure that that's going to happen well. Um, and I think that part of that, like Mary keeps saying, is we have to make sure this is institutionalized. You know, so, so whatever we do here can't be dependent on anything um, that is like a, that is just said in words. It has to be very clear and put in writing. Um, uh, finally, I think, I think even though we touched on this a little bit, we kind of put it aside, but it does sound like part of building the trust and building transparency is going to be having the central system that it sounds like people are going to need to know who should be on the field when. And so then if they do see someone from another town, for example, using the field, they can check in a lo, such a location and see if that, those people are supposed to be there. You know, because maybe, I, I wonder if sometimes they're seeing people use a field and they're just kind of wandering away. You know, so maybe, so having a central way of checking, you know, who's supposed to be in the field and how to, and, and having a way to register or, um, reserve the fields is good, and I assume that that would also include, you know, that the red, the reserving process would, would also require a step of approval. So I don't think, it doesn't, I would imagine it wouldn't just be you required it, you, you requested it and get it, I think it's probably something about um, approval. So I think that that, and I think that if people know that that's in place, they will probably feel more secure also. Um, and then finally, it, it seems like because we are a strange, small town, like over the years, I think we probably have to have a way to monitor, you know, how this is going. You know, so it can't just be, we put it in place and leave it, even though we want to make it institutionalized and we're going to try our best. I think we do need to make sure that there's some way that we're checking in, just making, to make sure it is doing what it's supposed to be doing. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Mary.
Um, so as I've said numerous times, the um, youth sports is an essential part of our kids' um, education in many ways, um, central part of their growth. Um, I did notice the, the other night, one of the things, actually came up tonight too, maybe we've been being penny-wise and pound foolish, because maybe one of the things, not maybe, I'm thinking that for this, the next budget, we should be looking at, um, creating a full-time position for our athletic director versus a stipend, which we've had forever, and we've just been going by the seat of our pants and it's, um, kind of exploded. So, um, that's, that's, I think, a prior, I know that's a priority that we're going to need to take a look at.
Mary, can I interject there? I just want to remind people that the reason why it, it went from being, you know, part of Kevin's job was, i- it was preventing him from, um, you know, really being a principal full-time. And why we didn't, I think there was some confusion over, well, are you going to, because people were upset about how much we were paying principals at the time, and they wanted to make sure we weren't going to be hiring a full-time athletic director. So at the time, that was one of the considerations, was we were, people were not happy with how much administration we had, and they really wanted us to, to keep it um, as minimal as possible. So I just want to remind people of that, so, sorry.
But it, it has never, at least in my experience, it has never been a full-time position. Um, so, you know, as Brian said, a lot of small towns, they start that way, and then they, they determine that it's just not working. So that's something for us to seriously consider, because then to Elizabeth's point, we will have somebody that will be able to really keep an eye on um, on what's going on and who's on the field. I did notice one, because I did a lot of comparisons of different towns, and um, that was one of the, the pieces that came up in a number of towns, is anybody could actually go right on the site and see who's locked in, you know, who's reserved space for different times, different days. Um, I did hear the other night frustration, um, especially from ABLL, who is trying really hard to improve Kenan's field. Um, frustration that if, if they're, if they're not in control anymore, that if the fields won't actually be taken care of the way that they have put their hearts and souls into, so, um, and I, I understand that frustration, um, so we really need to, to make something that works, because ideally, everybody keeps looking to DJ's field as being. Because ideally, everybody keeps looking to DJ's field as being the, the gold star. And so that's really where, where we should be trying to get, get all of the fields. The advertising that came up the other night is great, of course, it's labor intensive. So, you know, we need to research that better. Boys and Girls Club, I had no idea that they are sort of being penalized. Because they service the, the most needy of our, of our, our population. They're limited, they used to be limited to $40 a year that they could charge for the kids, which has totally been ridiculous. Now I think it's $75, but thinking in terms of everything that they give back is, so we really need to, to put them more in the equation. And the thing that I will say about the custodians is that when we were talking about the custodians, every town that I looked at pays the custodians inside now, the exact amount that they are, that we have to pay them. So that gets passed on and all of the towns have the minimum of either three hours or four hours based on what the, the contract is. So I'm just laying that out there, that that wasn't just a number that was thrown out. It's actually, all the other towns are doing, doing a similar type of thing. Not sure if it's right, but obviously it's different if, if things are going on like the Girl Scouts are going on while the custodians are there anyway. But if they're brought in, then that's, that's one of the pieces. So, and you know, as, as I've said a number of times, Elizabeth just said it too. I just, we, we need to put something in place so that no matter who, who is in charge of each one of these fields, because God knows how many hours that they put in. Everybody that's in this audience has done volunteering. But, you know, people get tired, people move on and we just wouldn't, we have to have the continuity. So really appreciate all of the input and look forward to, to additional input from people. Because we don't know everything. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Okay, I would like to move on to just recapping and next steps. So, yes, Hillary.
I thought, I thought we could like go back, because I have a couple of like follow-up questions from things other people said. They're pretty quick. I was just wondering if, for the next discussion, if we could get clarification on the deadline for Fowler Field. Because I, when I went to the recommission meeting, it sounded like January was a deadline. I don't quite know exactly what that entails. And then maybe we could think about a short-term plan for Fowler, separate from our, like, big long-term plan for all of the fields. Just so that we don't create something that's more expensive to fix by not maintaining Fowler, you know, in this early spring. And then with the discussions about athletic director, I'd be interested to know how many hours the person's currently working? And whether or not there's something in between what they're currently doing and a full-time position? In case maybe there's like a halftime would be an option in the middle. And then when we have more discussions, I'd be interested in more info about the, how the custodial costs, how the custodian costs would apply to indoors and outdoors? And what times they're actually in the building? To know like, who exactly that, with, with the proposal from two weeks ago, who exactly would be charged and what they would be charged? Because I'm assuming we're not charging every group the same custodian, like salary for each group. If there's one custodian fulfilling the needs for multiple rentals at the same time. So that would just be the other thing I'd like info on when we pick this back up.
I think that the equity piece is, is really, right, important, right? Because I think the, like, different organizations, because even the PTO, you know, there was confusion around PTOs. And I know since on CPAC, you know, does things in the school, has no, has meetings in the schools and whatnot. So I think just ironing out some of those housekeeping things would be really clear. Like, are, are organizations that are extensions of the school in some capacity? I mean, do we lump them with, you know, or I, I just think it's really, would be unusual that we would be charging the PTO, for instance, to, to rent a space that is, they're made up of teachers. That's, and I know it often participates in those conversations as well. So I'm just want to be, get more informed about when we get to the in-building stuff, those pieces? And how that secondary recommendation would be considered as well? Or, you know, outlining specifically what organizations are exempt because, and what, you know, the reasoning, right? Because there are some, you know, quasi-school, you know, organizations or something to that effect. But the equity piece, I think, is what, to build that trust, right, is, is really kind of important. Because when you ha, when you hear we're, we're Maynard, so it's small. So when you hear one group is paying something and another group is not, it just kind of, you know, like, why? You know, why are you doing it? Why are we not? And especially when you hear that the Boys and Girls Club is the one who's carrying most of the burden, that's just like heartbreaking. It really is. So I, and just the rental space, I know that the town, and which is what I saw in other areas, that they have, like, you would get like a license, right? So you get like a approval license that you would have, because you have to submit like your insurance. You know, your indemnification for whatever you're renting, if you do at the field. And so part of that would be that the organization would have a license on hand for approval, right? So there's any question of who's on the field, they just provide it. I think that's what the town does, like we're pro-field and stuff. Don't they give them like a approval license that they have on them for the space? Anybody know? Can we find out? Okay, can we find out what the, that, maybe that'd be like the task force kind of conversation is, is that the same process? I know that, like, I think Littleton, that's what their process was, I was looking at their information. It's like an application and then part of it is they have a license when it's approved.
And they get a permit and they they do have to show us definitive insurance to say that they're fully, yeah, they're fully covered.
Right. So I don't know if that would, that would be something that you could do anyway through the website, like through a, you know, a portal. Maybe just that you're making the payment, but you need prior approval to do that or something to that effect.
Okay. So I think I'm just gonna quickly go through next steps. I think Brian's meeting, two weeks on Monday with stakeholders. And then finding out what the urgency is with Fowler? And what needs to be done for Fowler Field's maintenance financially? Was there any other thing that we specifically stated was going to get done within the next couple of weeks?
I think the meeting on Monday led folks to believe that there would be an understanding of the total maintenance. So I don't know of how to capture that or if that was.
I'm just talking about specific things that we need to do, not the information that needs to be gleaned. But like, we're having a meeting, we're, we're gonna get the decision on Fowler Field. What, like, maybe, is it, is it finding out when the town's task force meeting is? And, and do we need to have a decision by then? That, you know, timeline sort of thing.
Yeah, I think part of that is when we get information, right? So I think that should be led, so part of the things I would want to see is some of that information before I know what we would know. Maybe outline what the information is that we would, we want before we go next. That, I don't know, that's what I was thinking is I think we need that information, understand before we can consider. So, you know, how much each organization currently pays? You know, which seasons they currently.
Yeah, we, we got that all on Monday night. But what we don't have is the
The expenses, yeah, the, I know, but all in one, and like the expenses that everyone does. Like some of the questions that were sent in the email, you know, that Nicole Carlin
Right.
asked, like like, so have an inventory of that, you know? And then also what is the total cost of maintaining all the fields and that, that kind of stuff? I think needs to be available. And if the DPW, I'm guessing the DPW would have something like that, because they're the ones right now. But I don't think they have anything budgeted like for Green Meadow, the backfield, you know? So that would be like an, a, something new, right? That isn't accounted for and how that, how we would work with the town to advocate for that? Is there an advocacy element here?
Even though it's in the MOU, that green specifically talks about Green Meadow and specifically talks about irrigation and all of that, but.
Right, so.
I remember from the summer when you guys had the, we were talking about the solar panels, didn't they say they were not maintaining that field? I thought they said that a few times.
Yeah, well, it, it's under, so on the map
Right.
in the MOU.
But I'm saying, but out loud, over the summer, they said they don't.
Right. So it feels very conflicting, right? We're getting like, like what we, what our expectation is the MO, so maybe we need clarity. And part of that conversation is, are we interpreting the MOA the same? I feel like we're not. And so maybe that might be helpful to understand, right? Is what do they envision? What is maintaining? Maybe, do we have a different definition of what maintaining means? Is that, do we need to start that?
Um, who, who was part of the group that originally worked on the MOA? I know you did Natasha, who else?
Morrow, Morrow worked with Justin about the map. And then Jennifer Godat helped inform, because I know Brian, just poor thing, just started like two months before. And then COVID, so, but it was really, and then the attorneys and Justin. So, so I mean, he helped inform, I mean, I, again, he, he, his, he has that landscaping expertise. I think he has a degree in landscaping to help inform what a field needs are.
Does it make sense for this, for, for what you're talking about? In terms of re-examining the MOA, does it make sense for that to be a conversation in the Personnel Subcommittee or the Budget Subcommittee or the Policy Subcommittee?
Well, the MOA was, was signed with Brian and Greg. And so I think, I mean, we approved like, you know, in support of it. But I would want to first maybe have, because a lot of it's operational. And maybe that needs to be a discovery on, you know, what.
Well, but that's what I mean, is who's going to do the discovery? Who's going to, who's going to look into the definition of maintaining? And the inventory of, of all of the tasks and that sort of thing. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense of who's going to be doing that.
I would say, I would, my suggestion would be Brian working with Greg in conjunction with Justin and maybe our buildings guy. That's, I don't know if he thinks that as well.
Okay.
We're not looking at the next 10 days, however, are we?
Oh, no, 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 but just, I think it's just another element of understanding that if we fundamentally have different beliefs of what maintaining a field is, then that's a problem, right? We're not going to ever solve, our outcome is never going to exactly be the same. And so that is, I think we need to understand, what does that mean?
I went to the recommission meeting, it was like all new to me and a ton of information. So I could definitely be wrong here, but my takeaway was that there is the MOU of like the ideal. But then the money just isn't there for Justin to do it all. So there was like a gap between what, like, the intention is for him to do and what he's actually able to do. But I could be definitely understanding that wrong. But that, like, I don't know that it's necessarily like a misunderstanding as much as the resources aren't like it there for it all.
Well, he sort of said that when he said that his budget is $40,000, but it really costs $70,000 to maintain. So he's got like 50% of what, what he should have.
Okay.
I, I think the only other thing we should probably make clear is that we'll touch on this on our next meeting, maybe. That people update the community so that they know that here, they'll get to see what happened.
Yep.
So Brian, can I ask a question about your next, like, what, what are you, what are your thoughts on? I'd like to kind of hear, like, because I know you're kind of like leading some of these conversations here before we meet again. And also when you're meeting with stakeholders to help kind of inform where we go. Because the advertising piece, those are the two take, bigger takeaways from the meeting on Monday, right? Advertising, exploring advertising and understanding maintenance. Do you think that will happen in two weeks?
I think we'll, we'll have some conversation about it. I don't think it'll be finished by then.
Okay.
Your stakeholder meeting two weeks from last Monday or, because, well, that, I, I feel like asking for more information on the 18th might be kind of pushing things. You know, for, for Brian to meet with, have, I don't know what day the actual, the next, his next meeting was going to be the 15th or the 22nd.
I, I think the 15th.
But I also feel like with COVID and with all these other things, I don't want to push, like, if this, if the 18th is, is pushing things, like, we could, we could revisit this in our meeting on the second instead.
We don't have it on the second, it was moved to the ninth.
Sorry, forgot about that.
Yeah, me on the ninth.
And I think the 18th, I'll be honest, I think your 18th agenda is packed full.
It's packed.
Given that I'm not meeting with that, that group until Monday, the 15th. And you typically, and I agree, like information on the Friday before, it should probably wait a little. And quite frankly, it's a longer, more in-depth conversation. It'll take some time to do the research. I think waiting a little while, although moving the conversation forward and getting to a solution. And there is a sense of urgency right now. We want to capitalize on that. We have a lot of people interested in this, so we can get to a good place. I just don't know that I can do it in seven days or in 10 days.
And just to be correct, I just, I just mean, I just mean to, to say, to tell people what happened. Just like the meeting happened and here, you know, just a quick, just so people know that it, it didn't get fall through the cracks. I think that we just have to keep that.
I just don't want you to feel pressure on the 16th and 17th, if you're dealing with other things, to try to pull this all together for us on the 18th.
So is it the, so December 9th is the first meeting? We will have the budget presentation for the school committee? And I'm guessing, we, you know, talked, so maybe we think about that date as a more informed overall? Because we're talking budget.
It's also an SEL recap or, or presentation from Jeff about how teachers and staff are doing. And it's tentatively when CPAC is going to present.
Okay. So then maybe the 16th instead or? I don't know, I'm just
I don't know, that's, that, I think the budget Subcommittee would know better, because you guys know what the presentation's gonna involve.
The 16th is when we're going to be voting on the superintendent request. But the ninth is like the first, you know, first pass per se is how we, I think we, we left that. So I'm just thinking about how we can incorporate a revisit to this that allows time for Brian and team to collect information. But that we don't, that we kind of put a, a date to hold ourselves to expectations.
We just go with the flow and we'll hear from Ryan with where he's at at each meeting. Like in the superintendent's update, hear a short little update, but not have like a hard date for something big.
I don't, I think it needs to be an agenda item. So I'm going to just go back to what happened last time. And I think there's enough community interest on this that we need to put it on agenda item if we're going to talk about it. So I appreciate the superintendent's update, but I think as we saw last time, that got a little deeper than we would want. And I think people really want to hear more about this. So however that works out, you know, just putting it on an agenda item, but I definitely think it needs to be one, even if it's just a 10-minute, no, quick update.
All right, I'm adding it to the rolling agenda right now, field and facilities.
Yeah, and also maybe a priority on the Fowler field, because that's the one that maybe is in the most trouble. So if we could do that before January, that can maybe make everyone feel better.
I'm putting it in the December 16th right now.
Is it, is it, and I, and I'm just gonna, just, we all know what, what you say when you assume. But maybe because it's snowing, we don't have to worry about a lot of field maintenance in January.
I was sorry I was asking, because I
I mean, I don't want to, I got no idea. And I'm sure the, the people who do the fields probably like, no, you got to do it. But I'm just hoping that might inhibit any expense, a lot of expense for field maintenance in January.
That was one of my, sort of what sparked my question, because I believe they said the money for maintenance was out in January. But I didn't know that that meant we needed to pick something up in January or if it was like something that we pick up in April or May.
Right, right. Like the expense, yeah, that's what I was thinking too. I'm hoping it's not in January, we start, there's expenses that need to be incurred to maintain it in some way. I don't know, I got, I got nothing. Letty, do you think you have enough information from our conversation as a takeaway for next steps?
Yep, I do. I think it's time to move on, because it's 9:30. Alrighty, um, without objection, I would like to accept warrants 22-009 and 22-010.
I will abstain from 09.
Okay. So does that mean I need to separate them? Probably. Okay, so, um, do I have, without objection, I would like to accept warrants 22-009, Mary?
Yes. Oh, oh, no, no objection. Yes, oh, oh, no, no objection.
Okay, Hillary?
Objection.
Elizabeth?
No objection.
All right, Lydia, no objection. And then without.
Just to, since you went around everybody.
Natasha, abstain. Okay, that objection, I would like to accept warrant twenty-two dash zero ten. All right, no objection. Both accepted. Um, right now, we will move to executive session under MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A. Um, reason three to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation with the Maine or Education Association. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares. I declare, um, the school committee will return to open session. We estimate this will take about fifteen minutes. I don't even think it's going to take that long. Um, so, Colleen, if you can take us into the next.
Roll call, you need to enter.
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry, adjourn to, um, or enter into executive session, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota.
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Lydia Clancy, yes.
And then, oh, Colleen, I think you're talking, but you're muted.
Just give me a second.
Can I run to the bathroom while she's moving everybody to the.
And then also the audio recording.
Well, the, yeah, the whole recording. Are we, are you still letting people in?
Uh, there's just one more lingering. For some reason.
Oh, so you don't have to physically put them in, they can come back in, okay.
I, I can admit all.
All right, thank you for hanging out and waiting for us to return. We are now back in open session. Um, so the next item on the agenda is committee reorganization. And I made the decision this week to step down as chair, because, um. There have been certain uh, difficulties, um, in in getting people or, or, or having the school committee, um, work together in a cohesive way. And consistently follow protocol, um, and respect the chair's position. So I am stepping down. We will be electing a new chair and a new co-chair, or, uh, sorry, vice chair tonight. Um, and now that I have, you know, rescinded my position. Brian is going to oversee the nomination and election of the next chair.
Okay. Then I will open the floor to nominations.
I nominate Hillary Griffiths.
I can second that nomination, if it's the time.
Hillary, are you willing?
Um, I'd like to hear what people think. Um, I think that, um, Mary and Lydia and Natasha have a lot more experience. Obviously have a lot, ton more experience with the school committee, um, that I don't have. Um, I've been really frustrated lately with how the group has been working together. Um, and if me being chair would help people work more cohesively together, um, I'm willing to do that. Um, but I also, um, know that I have, I also have limitations to, um. My, like, availability, I don't, I don't have availability barring emergencies during the workday. Um, and I don't have the historical knowledge that, um, other members have. Um, but, um, I'm willing to put in the work if that's what people want.
Um, I, I just would like to share that I, um, have been attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference. This week, um, remotely. And the, the first conference I went to, or the first workshop I went to on, um, Wednesday. Was, um, the school committee superintendent relationship. And in it, um, there were many things that they listed that were important to promoting the longevity of a superintendent. And, um, the behaviors in going through this list of what the school committee needs to do in order to nurture the relationship with the superintendent. And, um, promote the longevity of his employment. Um, the things that I felt were important that they listed, um, are things that I think Hillary, you do. Um, or exemplify, um, respect for the central office. Um, building trust, understanding governance versus management. Um, communication. Um, not just communicating, but also not over-communicating. Um, alignment of strategy between the school committee and the superintendent to, uh, what our goals are and how we're going to get there. Um, empathy and collaboration, not just within the school committee, but also with the central office. Um, teamwork, again, within the school committee and with the, um, with the administration. Um, trying to create and, and foster a, um, community and a sense of belonging. And then also, um, appreciation of the little things, like acknowledgement of things that people have done. Um, appreciating not just the teachers and the administrators, but the janitors and the people who serve lunch or, um, the, sorry, custodians, that sort of thing. And so those are all, I think, strengths of yours, and I know you don't have the experience. Um, I'm, I'm willing to help support you, but I, um, and I hope that you will not come up against the, um, the challenges and adversity that I have faced within this committee.
So I'd like to just, um, add, I don't know if this is best time. So, um, I think that some of the challenges that, um. You've mentioned about respect, I think that is very a mutually, uh, expectation for all parties. Um, I think that, um, that's something I, I do think that needs to be really understood. Um, and appreciated. So wherever our breakdowns have been, um, respecting each other as people. Fundamentally, that we are all committed to being, having positive outcomes and bettering our community is at the heart of all of what we do. And when it gets to a place where personal, um, beliefs of a particular person overshadows the procedural, the mission or the outcome. I think that has been very hard, um, continuously to. And we talked about this in, in information sharing, you know, I know we talked about it in our workshop, uh, and how we, we do that. Um, and so that's something that I think is primarily, and that impacts everything. That impacts a lot of these things, right? Because people then feel, you know, excluded. People feel like there's not a, a, a continuity of information sharing. People then, it, it just is, it's a very snowballing effect here. Um, you know, and I think that, you know, I was reading, you know, from that the role, the chair and for mask, you bring up mask. Mask has a, you know, a handout about the role of the chair. Um, and, and part of that, you know, it talks about a first among equals. The chair is responsible for the committee, not the other way around. The chair has only the authority granted to him by their colleagues. Remember, according to Robert's Rules of Order, the chair is a servant of the assembly, not its master. A successful chair will remember the, the advice, lead as you would be led. And it goes on, there's a whole handout about, about the, about the role of the chair. Um, some of it is members who feel valued, who feel their strengths and interests are being put to good use, who feel they're being treated fairly. Will be more willing to, able to focus on the work. Most members will appreciate working on a committee where leadership is shared, rather than the residing solely with the chair. It is up to the chair to organize a committee's work to make sure the best use of the strengths different for members. Effectively, then, the chair can help the committee greater than the sum of its parts. Let me, it goes on, but those are the things that I fall back on, and we have so many strengths within our group. Um, I think there is many opportunities for us to, to, to do better, myself included. Um, I think sometimes the feeling is that we just, um, feel like we sometimes don't have a choice. And we're not being brought along for the journey in some way. Um, so, you know, Hillary, I, I think that you, I think you bring a lot to the table. I, I know this is your first year, and this is a very hard year to be starting in. Um, so I, are you comfortable with doing it? For one, I want to make sure, because I know we've asked this for each person who has been discussed and talked about. Is this something that you feel comfortable doing and that you don't feel forced to do?
Um, it, it was definitely never a goal of mine. Um, when I considered the school commit, running for the school committee and the aspects of the school committee I was interested in. Um, that was never a part that I was interested in. Um, I, it's been really frustrating me. I feel like a lot of my energy recently has gone to worrying about interpersonal stuff in the committee. Um, and I know last night I asked Elizabeth to, um, deal with something for the DEI Subcommittee. Because I felt like I was, like, distracted by interpersonal stuff. And, um, I, I feel like we all five really have, um, consistent goals for what we want for the school and what we want for the kids and what we want for the community. And, um, that, the interpersonal stuff is getting in the way of us doing the best work that we can for that. Um, and, um, the, some of the chair responsibilities are, um, like, I'm like, I'm, I, I talk a lot, but I'm kind of shy. Some of them make me uncomfortable, um, but I am willing to do that if that will help us work together and move forward. So we can focus on what we need to do, um. Yeah.
Um, can I, I'd just like to, um.
I can get from bath if that's possible.
Yeah, can I, can I jump in? Um, I don't, I, I think that, I think that I would have expected that Natasha would be the next chair. Right, that's, that makes the most sense. She's been the vice chair for a while now. Um, and I think that the way that this is playing out right now feels a little like a surprise. And a little, um, I'm going to say the word mean, it feels a little mean. Um, I don't, I don't, it's just a little bit, like, it's a little bit, um, you know, it's just, it's a little bit, uh. So it's a little bit mean, I think. So, and I, and I don't know if that's what it's intended to be, but I think that, um, I think that either Natasha or Hillary would be fine as chairs. It's just, it's just a really a question of, you know, who, I think, as Hillary said, who can everybody work, you know, alongside as the chair? I think is really the, is really what it comes down to.
Can I ask a question about our bylaws? I was just wondering our bylaws, so, because I'm still the vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
Currently, um, and so if the chair steps down. How do, what is the language in our bylaws?
I checked, I, I spoke with, um, Dorothy about this. I double-checked, and if the chair steps down, the entire school committee reorganizes. It is only if the chair is absent does the vice chair fill in. But if the chair steps down, the chair is not absent, there is no chair. So the vice chair gets elected. And I know you're going to double-check, because you don't trust anything that I say, and that is exactly.
Please don't make it personal, Lydia, please stop.
Natasha, the problem is, is that you have been making it personal. You have.
I haven't talked about one personal thing against you this whole meeting, please stop, and I never do.
Brian.
Yeah, well, let's see, if there's more discussion, that's great. If somebody, I see Mary has a comment, so let's let people comment, because I know we have a mo, uh, nomination and a second, but this is the discussion.
Right, exactly.
Mary?
Yeah, so I just want to start by saying, Lydia, you have done a yeoman's job with being chair. Um, you've given it so much time. You've had, as, as Hillary said, there's been a lot of interpersonal, um, things that have, have created challenges. Um, I think I, I, you know, I know that in the sixteen years that I've been on school committee, I've never, um, quite experienced this. Um, so, but I do know that everybody's heart is in the right place, everybody is passionate about the kids. So I just want to, you know, tell you that you've been valued, absolutely. And your point about, um, one of the, one of the main goals is to, um, maintain the longevity of, of a good superintendent, um, and, and we really need to nurture Brian, because he's a real asset. So we need to work toward that. Hillary, I think it's, it's time for fresh, fresh eyes. And just in the short time that I've known you, you bring to the table different things that, um, it, it makes me rethink. And which is great, because, you know, when you've been doing this for this long, you, you kind of sometimes stop getting, being creative. Um, so I just think a fresh set of eyes, a fresh attitude is what we need right now. So I'm really hoping that you will, um, step up. And like Lydia said, I will do whatever I can to, to help you, um, to that end.
Other comments for discussion?
I, I would just like to say, in response to Elizabeth's comment about this being mean. Has nothing to do with being mean. It has everything to do with who would be appropriate. And I simply do not feel that anyone else would be appropriate. Especially the, a candidate who, or a person who has created so much division. And, um, has been an obstructionist and has created.
This is the part that feels mean.
I know, Lydia, I mean.
Well, what? Why can't, why am I not allowed to defend myself? Why am I not allowed?
Nobody's accusing you of any, I'm not accusing you of anything. You're, she's saying something and then you're directing feedback about me. Stop that. That is totally inappropriate, and that's why we're having issue. Stop being so.
We're having issues because you won't follow protocol and you won't follow open meeting law. That's why we're having issues.
Lydia, stop.
Let's just have a, can we just have?
I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Because I didn't mute anybody yet, but now I think I can, because Colleen let me have the controls. So we have a motion or a nomination, um, and we had a second. So we'll do a roll, so this would be to make Hillary the chairperson. And we'll take a roll call vote, and I'm just going in order on my screen. So Mary, you get to be first. Colleen, you're recording this, right? You're, yes, okay, thank you. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Lydia?
Yes.
And Hillary?
Well, Hillary, I don't want you to do something, I'm gonna, I don't want you to be doing something that you don't want to do. And I, that's what I was trying to get you to, to acknowledge here.
Trying to get you to.
What? No, I, I asked her early.
I didn't actually hear Hillary vote.
I know, well, I'm going to withdraw my, my vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I'll say yes.
Okay.
I think that this may be something that we should revisit. Um, I think that this may be something that we should revisit in a period of time. I think that there's a lot of emotions and a lot of feelings. And I'm concerned that any out, any vote or outcome tonight, there'll continue to be a lot of contention and difficult, difficulty working together. I think maybe if I say yes and I do this for a while, we can get some space and maybe regroup in a little while. And maybe that will help us work together.
And Hillary, whatever you need, I will help you as well. I'm not, you're not, everyone supports you.
And just so I can backtrack, Natasha, do you want to, I just don't know, just so Colleen has an accurate record. The, I always want you to have a vote, however you want to vote.
I, I want to vote with Hillary is, I want to make sure she's comfortable with, with the role is. I don't want her to feel like she is surprised or, you know, she's forced to do this in some, some way. And so earlier she, she indicated she would be, and then there was hesitation. So I just want to make sure, Hillary, I'm considerate of your feelings. I've shared this with you and others, I am okay with doing chair. I understand that there are people here who prefer me not to do chair. And if you don't want to do chair, you're not the only person who, who can do it. I think the resistance is there, you know, some people for their own personal feelings, just prefer not to. And, and, and that's, that's their, that's the feeling. So you do whatever you feel is, 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 you know, what you feel is the best interest. And if, if you are okay with it, I support you 100% in that. But don't feel like you have to take something on that is going to overwhelm you if you're not, you feel like you're not prepared to do it. I think you're more than intelligent to learn something realistically. It is your first year and I think that just is, is hard. You know, thinking about budget and all those other things that you'd be gave that you're not quite familiar with. And I think maybe that's what some of your worry is. You have people who will support you. It is unusual that you have someone in their first year will be chair. But I think you, it's really, what do you want to take on?
Um, this was definitely not how I wanted the year to go. But I don't I'm really concerned about relationships within the group. And
I like your idea of doing it for a bit and seeing how you, how you feel. If this isn't, you know, a forever type of thing, so do it if you're comfortable and then assess, you'll have all the support. If you're not comfortable, that's, that's okay too. But if you are and you just want to give it some time to, to get into it, we're all behind you.
I think that, um, sorry.
I was just going to say, also, I think we did talk at some point about dividing up duties differently. And if that's something that needs to happen now, that's also something we can do. Okay.
I think that I definitely don't have the free time during the day that Lydia has had. And so there, I would need help. But I think that my perspective would be that I'm willing to do this so that we can find a way to cooperate together and work together better without some of the roles that have been in place up to this point. And maybe with some space, we'll figure out a way to move forward together. I don't like being in a leadership role, it's not something I'm like comfortable with in general. But if that's what will help us as a group move forward. I'm okay being uncomfortable.
So then we have four people who have said yes, including Hillary, so I'm just making sure. Natasha, if you want
If Hillary is a yes, I'm a yes, so
We have a five. Colleen, can you make sure you have the accurate record? Natasha was a yes as well? I believe, is that right Natasha?
Yep, I, my, my vote is contingent on Hillary's willingness to try. And I, I do worry that she, she's been put in a position that maybe she wasn't anticipating. And so Hillary, whatever you need, you have support.
Thank you.
So it sounds like you have support of the entire committee. You know you have my support and Colleen's support. Every, anybody does, everybody does, that's what we do. But I was just making sure you knew you were part of the everybody. And then, so just point of clarity, does anything else need to be changed on the committee or just that?
We need to elect a vice chair.
We have to elect a vice chair.
Okay, can someone
Hillary oversees that now.
Oh, Hillary, you're now in charge.
Oh boy, I need a minute.
Open the Florida nomination, sorry.
Open the Florida nomination for vice chair.
Open the Florida nominations. Okay, I'll nominate Natasha.
Do we have to have a discussion about that first before we do anything, a different nomination, for instance?
No, we can, we can have multiple nominations and then discuss.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to nominate Lydia as the vice. Anybody else?
What do I do?
I don't know.
Well, you need seconds for each of the nominations. Okay.
So then can the chair second?
Yeah, chair can do whatever, this is for everybody, everybody gets a voice here.
I don't think I'm ready for this.
No kidding.
I'm sorry, Hillary.
I think you just need to ask for a second and then if somebody seconds, then you'll go
Okay, I'll ask for a second. But we need, which one are you asking for a second? Because we have two nominations, we don't have a second for either. So basically I pick who's vice chair then.
You just picking, you just want to see if there's
You can second both, I mean
Okay, I second both.
Yeah, both of them are up for discussion.
Okay. Discuss.
At this point, I think everyone kind of knows what they want to do. I honestly am not, the, the whole personal bashing thing is really uncomfortable. And if that's what we're anticipating to do as part of discussion, I, I hope that we don't proceed down this because I think we're better than that. And so if everyone feels like they need more information on who should be vice chair, if we can keep it respectful, I hope that's
Can I just ask, can we, can I just nominate Mary?
Oh geez.
Yeah, that's, that's what happens. I nominate Mary.
I open it up to seconds for that too.
Yeah.
Second.
Good.
Oh, you're a brash.
Yep. You got the longevity, you got the, the skills.
I'm just not sure I have the time.
All right, great.
If we're doing it on a, on a provisional type of basis like Hillary, like her.
Well, I'm not, this is not a job interview for me, so people, whoever you vote for, whoever you want, you know.
So what happens now? Do we, we seconded?
Well, if, if, if there's no discussion, then
We vote.
You go through and ask each, Hillary goes through and asks each member who they're voting for.
So can I ask a question about generally, so if, so if, if there was concern about and this is probably more of a question for you, Lydia. If there was concern about you feeling your stepping in, in doing the role as chair in that, and vice chair would be someone who may need to step in as chair in that event. Yes, I'm trying to reconcile those two aspects where you
Well, I would love to explain it to you, but I'm not allowed to say anything that might hurt your feelings, so I'm not going to.
Oh my gosh. All right, so I'm going to just say, Hillary, I, I would really like for us not to have a vice chair who makes someone, who, who brings issues all the way to personal every time. And I think that is probably part of the reason that we're having you have, use, just use your own eyes in judgment and what you've seen and what you've heard, Hillary, and so
And what you know to be true.
Wait a second, are we just voting on whether or not Mary's going to be the vice chair?
No, I think there's three nominations.
All three nominations, yeah.
I ask everybody there, I like go, I go around, ask everybody. And then we see who has like two.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, um, Lydia.
Who do I vote for? Myself, I vote for myself.
Wait, wait, so wait a second, are we, should we just say who's voting for Lydia and then yes, 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 and all the way back?
No, she said I go around the room. Okay, so Natasha.
I would say no for Lydia.
No, you're supposed to say who you're voting for.
No, no, I think you have to do each one individually, right? It's like
Brian said I, really? I thought Brian said I just asked who.
Each one individually.
Yeah.
Yeah, say, do it, I think you say, who wants to vote for Lydia and then you just do roll call.
Yeah.
Well, then it should be Natasha was the first one nominated, so should do Natasha first.
I agree.
All right, so we already have votes on a motion.
So we're pausing that. Wait, sorry, I'm confused.
Right.
So technically, if we're going around free, oh, Colleen speak, yeah.
So we have three motions on the table. I would suggest you take it in order, Natasha, Lydia, Mary, and do a roll call for each one.
So Mary, Lydia, you want to, you want to rescind your vote or withdraw your vote? I think, because you said yes.
But, okay, so
Yeah, well, you said no.
Well, okay, I withdraw my vote then.
Rescind my vote.
Okay, so for Natasha as vice chair. Lydia?
No.
Natasha?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
Elizabeth?
Yes. And then you.
See, I don't want to be the one picking though.
Okay.
I think you're going to have to.
Yeah.
That's why they have five members.
You could, what happens if she abstains?
Well, if she abstains for all three, then we're in quite a dilemma.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of just being a member, Hillary, you just gotta, it's, it's okay. You're not gonna, it's not going to hurt any, it won't hurt my feelings. I don't, hopefully it doesn't hurt Lydia's feelings, it's, it is what it is, it's what's the best interest of the board. So just think about it that way. And Mary, I'm sure Mary's feelings will be hurt either, so it is what it is, happens every year.
Go with you got.
I want to vote for Mary.
Oh no, you jumped.
Just say no and do the next person.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, no.
Okay.
Okay, and then Lydia. Okay, Lydia, for Lydia. Natasha?
No.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
No.
Okay. No. Now Mary. Lydia?
No, because I know she doesn't want to do it.
Okay, Natasha?
No.
Mary?
No.
Elizabeth?
I guess I'll go with no.
I appreciate it.
We need three votes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then it doesn't matter when I vote.
I am curious, in a stalemate, does the superintendent have a vote? I don't know. I, this is so unprecedented, I have no idea.
I think you have to figure it out.
From, from what I understand, and I think this was explained during the superintendent search. Mary, do you remember during the, the meetings with Art? I think it's that, so the third, Mary obviously has been eliminated, so now we go back
I, she eliminated, we all, everyone got no.
But I get four no's.
But she got four no's.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Is that, is this a real thing?
Whereas Oh, Mary's eliminated because Mary doesn't want it, so like I'll vote no, Mary can, Mary's done and she's not numb, like, you know.
I appreciate it, but, yeah.
So technically, Natasha, you and I tied because we each got two. So we have to go around, what?
Can we do co, co-vice chairs? Can you
I'm okay, I have a vote, so I'm okay.
Do you want to make a motion of who you want to, who you to nominate?
Oh, no, no, we don't need to do a nomination again, it's, it's still
We can, we can revisit the vote.
We're still on the tail, it came, it was a draw. So now, I believe what happens is you go around and you ask each member of the two of us, which do you choose? Okay. Or you can go around twice and do Natasha and then me, but we could end up in a tie again. Oh, I think Hillary froze. She
Did that on purpose.
Wow, that's
She'll come back.
Timely.
She will, yeah.
Right, so we have no, no chair, no vice chair, so Brian, this is still your meeting, since the chair is unavailable.
Then I get to like run the vote again?
Well, here she is.
Oh, good.
She's out.
Oh, she'll be right back. Because if she has a vote, then it won't be, it won't be a tie and she has a vote. I don't know who she's voting for, but she has a vote. But we need her here to do this.
She can also call in if she's struggling.
There she is. Colleen will let her in and it's back to her meeting.
Now she just needs to be unmuted.
Sorry, I didn't do that on purpose.
That's okay.
Put this all like in suspense.
I didn't actually realize that was, I was like, had no internet for a few minutes there. Okay, so do we, did the things happen while I was off or do we go around for Lydia? Okay, so Lydia, vote for Lydia.
Uh, so are you doing one and one the other?
No, so Lydia, who do you vote for?
I vote for myself.
Natasha, who do you vote for?
I vote for myself, either the two.
Elizabeth, who do you vote for?
Natasha.
Mary, who do you vote for?
For Lydia.
Okay, and I'll vote for Natasha.
Okay.
All right, we're good.
Well, done.
We're good.
We are moving on.
Yeah.
The next agenda item.
Yep.
Members' comments.
Okay.
Subcommittee reports, if there are any.
Sorry, I'm like
No, you're doing great.
I'm done. Elizabeth?
Um, okay, well, I guess I'll just talk a little bit about how we had our DEI meeting. And we made some headway looking at some data. We got to have principals from each of the buildings in the room or assistant principals. So we had Rob and Carolyn and Karen in the room with us. And we had a productive conversation and we have another meeting coming up on Monday where we're going to follow up on something we talked about. In, in conjunction with that, we also had the data walk. That was, you know, just on Tuesday, which feels like a million years ago now. But so now we have, you know, we'll be talking about that at the next meeting on Monday when we have the DEI meeting. And I will also mention that Hillary and I, and by we, I should say it's me, it's Hillary and me I'm talking about. And then we also listened in on tomorrow meeting to kind of see what they are doing and thought more about how we can coordinate if, if there's any overlap there, so. So yeah, we, that's, that's my report. I haven't had the strategy meeting and we'll have it in a couple weeks. Oh, and then one more question, are we going to get a student, are we going to have a student sometime?
Yes, I heard from Chuck today, they just elected their student body officials. And so yes, we will have them at the next meeting and I will pull up that email and let you know.
I have it, Lydia, if you want me to read it.
Oh yeah, please.
Annie, I always pronounce this wrong name on. K O N I E C Z K A.
Okay. Okay, great. Looking forward to having.
And Katie Carlisle.
Okay.
We'll have to have her, uh, pronounce her name next meeting.
So there'll be two switching off. Okay.
Okay, Mary.
Um, so I don't know if anybody was gonna talk about the five on five meeting that we had, was it last week? Um, but I can talk about that. So the selectmen and the school committee got together last week. Um, I thought it was a good meeting. It was more to talk about vision, um, and that, so short term and longer term vision on both sides. So, um, we're talking, we're gonna be having more of those, uh, which will, I think will be productive because one of our school committee goals is to have, um, a better relationship with, you know, between the two committees. Um, and then, um, last night Natasha and I were at the budget tri board meeting. So the two FinCom, uh, two selectmen and then two school committee, we talked about, um, the end of the fiscal year. Um, reporting that isn't, hasn't quite been finished yet. Um, Wayne has done what he was supposed to do, which accolades at, at our side. Um, but the, with the new, um, personnel at the, um, on the town side, it's a little delayed. Um, uh, the, um, Greg Johnson has been talking to Department of Revenue to keep them informed and that, so we're in a good place. Um, one of the conversations was what does it do to our bond rating? And, um, so we're, we're okay right now, but one of the questions that I had for Greg is if this happens again, because if we're delayed now, does that, is that also gonna delay us, you know, for the next year, um, to pay, play catch up? And, um, so that's sort of something that we need to keep on the front burner, because we work so hard to keep our bond rating, um, at a really good level. So, and then we just talked about, um, where we are with the FY twenty-two status and there were initial numbers with the FY budget development. Um, there were a couple of other things that we talked about too, but, um, I'll let, um, Natasha interject if she wants.
I think the only other thing, thank you Mary, that was really great. I know you're the note taker, so I figured you had most, most of the details there. Yeah, yeah, no, see, the other thing I, that come up, um, you know, Jeff gave out this presentation, which I think was, uh, in the town budgets subcommittee about, um, China and he's, this is where his scientist, him and, uh, Jillian, they started talking a whole bunch of science and I, oh man, it was too late for me to.
You too. That's why I didn't talk about it.
The P value?
All, all that stuff. I mean, um, but it was, it was great because that, that, I, I really like how they brought that data analysis approach to trying to find comparable, uh, districts for us to really, and, and long story short, there are not many. Maynard, it, even the science has proven Maynard is ultra unique in our, um, the, in the way that we were being measured. Like so the, how much is supported our, our income, um, commercial, all these other factors that were weighed differently. Um, so it'd be great. Milis actually did come up at, so it didn't sound like we've been off in, in looking at Milis as a comparable district or a town, but maybe, so that kind of felt a little bit reassuring for me, uh, Mary. I don't know if you felt the same way.
Littleton as well. Use, but they, their commercial base is so much more than us. Like we've got a nine percent commercial base. They've got like a twenty-three percent commercial base. So that changes that whole dynamic.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that was, so I think more to come. I think we'll see the, how this tool may be used to help inform. Like I think how I understood it is would be, how are we comparing in our different segments of budget? You know, in, in other areas and are we disproportionately different, you know, broadly? I don't think it's supposed to guide us like to the T, but just overall, like a, kind of like a, a temperature read, um, is how I understood this to be. Um, as we look at like education or general fund police, all these other things. Um, so that was helpful. And then the other part too, Brian, which Greg said he was going to circle back to you about was the, uh, chapter, um, I'm sorry, the charter school reimbursement and the assessment. And I think it's more, um, in line with understanding where, um, that cliff. You know how we had that cliff right when you started, like we had, you know, it, it's the first year you start, you get a hun, or whatever the reimbursement is and then it goes down to like sixteen and thirty or whatever. Um, so I think the, the desire is to understand or project that a little bit better during the budget planning. And I, we did say that the data isn't always known until January, right Colleen, when you get that report of all the enrollment for different places? So, um, I think there was, Jeff mentioned, there was definitely gonna be appetite to try to get more clarity on, on a number that's closer to that, or some, some better estimation. So we're not, I think the last time it was off by like three hundred thousand or two hundred thousand or something for one year when they were forecasting. So, um, and I don't know how you do that because then you have to know, like kids kind of come and go every year. It's not like everyone starts in sixth grade. You know, they start sometimes in seventh grade, so that I didn't have a clear understanding of what to do. But you, Greg said he was gonna ask you more about that, um. And that, that's all, the only thing I wanted to add, Mary, was just that, that charter school piece that came up. Um, part of that budget piece. Were you done, Mary?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm all done, sorry.
Okay. Hillary, do you want me to continue? I have a couple of other updates, but I don't wanna overstep.
Oh, definitely.
Okay, um, so the only other things that I just wanted to, Mary, thanks for, uh, the, the, the five on five. Um, just to thank you to the select board for, um, allowing a space for us to, um, to meet. Um, you know, it, I, it's, it's one step and I, I know we have the, the tri board meeting that is also on the, on the horizon potentially for the, the thirtieth of November. Um, which, right, I think that's what the tentative proposed date that, um, was sent out. Lydia, is it right? Hello, Lydia?
Yeah, I still haven't heard back from everyone.
Okay, oh, that was a date though, right? It was the thirtieth of November? Okay.
Yep.
Um, and, um, and so it would be, it's great to kind of, that will be more of a, I think, a budget discussion. Um, I did add for everyone's awareness, I circulated the, I, I, I'm gonna leave it just as a draft calendar because I think there might be tweaks, you know, with stuff along the way, but the school committee budget schedule for this year um, that we, we, we had, um, agreed upon in the budget subcommittee. And I did add on there that, um, the FinCom will be wanting us to, and Brian, this is also for you and Wayne, um, January tenth to meet, to go to their meeting, um, and speak budget talk. So that is the date that will be penciled in, um. And the, um, closing the books for FY twenty-one, I know Mary kind of, but is, um, the other part is the free, the free cash? Did you, did you speak about that, Mary? I'm sorry.
No, no, good.
Okay, yeah, so the, so part of, um, the, one of the dilemmas right now is because we haven't closed FY twenty-one completely, and the next week and a half, Greg indicated that they're gonna be sending a letter in lieu of balance, the Department of Revenue, and basically it's putting us on notice that we're still working on closing the books. This was supposed to be done, but there's a lot of, you know, when there's things that come up, you have new staff, working together, other COVID, I mean, anything. It, it's been a little bit more challenging. The challenge though is that we don't know what our free cash certification will be to plan for some of the capital projects until we get that. So there's gonna be a very small window, it sounds like. By the time we get that certified to when the, the capital planning committee might be able to provide recommendations, which have to be, uh, I think per town charter to the select board by January first. Um, so although there was a little bit more reassurances that what they project probably won't be different from what the state, um, Department of Revenue certified. But anyway, so that was one of the, the urgencies that Greg is feeling um, on that end.
And we do, um, budget subcommittee does have a meeting on December first and the capital planning committee is going to come at that point with their recommendations. Of course, you know, the certification is needed, but, but Greg did say that we, we, you know, he's pretty certain about a conservative number that at least they can work with, so.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the other thing, uh, this is more just, uh, maybe for, for Lydia and, and Brian um, about athletic fees, nothing to answer now, but I know that we've gotten a lot of questions about the change from last year to this year, and I think there's some unresolved discovery about the reasoning. Um, do we have an understanding of where we lie with under, and, and how that, no, okay, I see, yes, Brian's saying yes and Lydia, you're saying no.
Talking about the activity fee?
Yeah, there was a fluctuation.
So my understanding is it's been four hundred dollars for students in grade seven through twelve and then two hundred for chill, the second child in the family, except for sixth graders where it's two hundred dollars because they don't have quite as many offerings. And last year we made a one-time reduction to two hundred because we just didn't offer much because of COVID. Is my.
Right, and, and where the issue is, is that the parents who have emailed me about it want documentation on where we voted for that one-time fee reduction and I can't find it.
Okay.
Um, I, I have gone back through, I've watched all of the meeting, um, the meetings where we, we could have discussed it. It's not on the agenda. Um, I don't know that we ever voted officially. I think it was something Brian suggested that we do and we all agreed that that was a good idea since we were only, um, offering a few activities because of COVID. But it's not in the meeting minutes that I've gone through and it's not, um, it's not in any of the videos. So I frankly, I, 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 I just simply don't have the documentation to share with the parents who have emailed me.
So is it more that the amount that's posted on the website now was what it was before COVID? And that we just never gave approval for the reduced rate? I wonder if that, and, but although we weren't opposed to it, obviously, um, maybe that's the way it could be just communicated, just say, look, we technically never voted on the reduced rate. We are still, I mean, we could retroactively vote on it and say, yes, we, we vote on what was previously applied if it's more of a procedural thing, but it was done with the consideration to alleviate the financial hardship, I think, for the community members to allow sports. I think the intent was there, but maybe procedurally we just skip the step, right?
Yep. I think so, yeah.
Is that something that you would be okay with replying back to about that? Okay.
Yep. Yep.
Right, that was the only other, um, uh, and I know that we have holiday next week, so happy veteran's day to everybody. Um, enjoy the day off. I feel like one day is just not enough though.
Um, okay, Lydia, do you have things to say? Or.
I, I, I don't, but thank you. Yeah, I mean, we haven't had any subcommittee meetings. We're still trying to reschedule our personnel and policy subcommittee meetings. So yeah, I'm good.
Okay, let's vote to adjourn.
Oh, Hillary, do you have anything you want to report out on?
Not today.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
A second.
Okay, um, we can do roll calls, so adjourn. Okay, um, Mary.
Yes.
Elizabeth.
Yes.
Lydia.
Yes.
Natasha.
Yes.
Hillary, yes.
Good night.
Alright.
Let's adjourn.